Good evening. It's Monday, September 18th, and this is a meeting of the Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is MBTA Communities, Status of Scheduling of Public Outreach Forums. Is this you, Colleen?
Um, it's just a little bit of all of us.
Okay.
But we have scheduled them. Um, we have scheduled them. Everybody get their letters? Everything look good?
Yes.
We've had some comments on it. We've had a lot of calls, which is good. People are asking if they're going to be recorded, if they're going to be run live. So there's some interest, which is good. We'll be making, I believe, a combination of our chart, the timeline, and then the information and zoning 101, and I'll be going over that with Lilly tomorrow or the next day. And I'll just shoot it out to all of you so you can see the final thing. Other than that, there's just a lot of summaries here.
Could I add something to that? So, just so you know, since the last meeting, Lisa sent the flyer out to the school electronic backpack.
Oh, forgot about that.
That's okay. And this went to my Southborough, to Beth Mellow, to post there. It's on the town website. It went out to boards and committees. We sent it, I asked Pamela Francois about putting it in the newsletter, but they only publish that every two months, so it didn't meet the window of opportunity. But she said she would post it around the senior center. We're planning on, Colleen's going to send out one of those e-alerts, which the town will get whoever subscribes to those. Well, that'll be good, and it'll give a little blurb and then link it to the Planning Board webpage with all the information on it. So it's getting out there. It's in news and announcements on the Planning Board webpage. Were we able to get a newsflash on the main town website?
Um, I believe, they were working on it. I honestly didn't check it, but let me look right now.
Um, and then these postcards went out, and we have, like Colleen said, we got a lot of people who have received this. Some of the questions that have been coming up ahead of time, one in particular is, are these consecutive informational forums? Or are they both the same? And we said, well, the first one will be, you know, the PowerPoint. The second one will have PowerPoint too, but at the second one, the, we'll be able to answer more questions based on what came up at the first one. So you might get a little bit more into the weeds in the second one if it's the same people. But there's been a lot of feedback and interest, so.
We do have the, uh, the newsflash on the main page is there.
Yeah, and did come out this nice noticeable color, so.
Could you see it in your mail?
Yeah.
I was gonna, I was gonna take a screenshot of me holding it and text it to you, but.
I could have put that on the website.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of. Yes, Ms. Hulahan.
Uh, just a quick question around quorum. If we're all there, do we need to have a public, like, do we have to hold?
We posted it.
Oh, you did post it. Okay. And the second thing is, I've had a work conflict come up on the 27th, so I'm no longer available to attend that.
Okay. We'll finish everything up on the 21st.
Thanks for all your work, Colleen.
Thank you for the help.
So would these frequently asked questions, are these going to be for the 21st?
Yes, and Marnie and I were gonna, Marnie was gonna try and make them a little bit more Southborough.
Oh, good.
And in the meantime, I'm working on a glossary of acronyms and whatnot that people probably wouldn't know.
Okay.
Um, and then as she goes through it, she'll find some other things that maybe we know, but no, you know, people in general wouldn't know.
That was my goal. Somehow work got in the way. So I will try to look at it tomorrow. But there, it's pretty extensive, that FAQ.
Yeah.
Our thought was to maybe have just a one-page front and back that's just abbreviated with not a lot of the detail that's in this.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Just very high level.
Yeah, yeah. And then if there were things that come up on the 21st, we can add a question for the 27th.
You know what I can do, Marnie, is.
And I can help you if you, if you are, if you can't get to it tomorrow, let me know and I can work on it.
It's not looking really good right now. But I, you know, like, I could do it like tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Um, so if you want to try and tackle it in the morning, I could probably look at it in the evening, but there's no way I'm going to get to it in the day.
Okay. I'll do that.
Yeah, and I'm happy to help too. I'll just put, if, if it gets to the point where there isn't, I'll just stop everything else and I'll just, we'll jump on that too. So I'm sure we can come up with something. Okay. Not to worry.
Mr. Maria, any comment, question?
No question. Thanks, thanks so much. I was really excited to get it in my box, even though I knew it was coming. It was like, oh, here it is. I'm super excited. Thank you for moving the time. I think it's, um, it was really flexible of you. I wanted to, for example, I think there's another forum that night for the library, and I hope to be able to attend both. So for anybody out there, that's a possibility as well. No, I'm looking forward to it. I have questions too. So I'm hoping to learn also and like to hear from everybody. I hope a lot of people show up.
I just want to add, just so it's perfectly clear, the forums are being held at the Public Safety Building at 32 Cordovaill in the training room. And this Thursday's, September 21st starts at 6:30, but the following Wednesday on the 27th, it starts at 5:30. So just so it's.
Because it's a library.
Yeah, to accommodate the other meetings.
Does it have a time that it ends?
I think it'll be an hour, hour and a half.
Okay.
You know, small presentation, questions.
Good. Looking forward to it.
Ms. Braschio, any questions or comments?
Just to thank everybody once again for all the hard work that's gone into this. Marnie, you specifically, you and Colleen have spearheaded a lot of this. So much thanks to you.
Yes, thank you. Looking forward to it. And just to, as further explanation, and the MBTA Communities is a statute that was passed by the state that requires any town that has a public transit station in their town to create a zone with 15 units an acre multifamily housing. So that's what the forums are going to be about, to discuss what this is, how it affects Southborough, and to get feedback from residents on where they'd like to see this zone or zones go. So thank you, Colleen and Marnie. Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience or anyone on Zoom on this?
10 attendees and no hands.
No hands, no hands. Okay, onward. The next item on the agenda is the Public Works Planning Board Select Board Goal to Abolish. Is this just a update item?
Yeah, so the Select Board has this on their agenda for discussion tomorrow at their meeting, towards the end of their agenda. Just want to point that out. The Planning Board had sent a letter to the Select Board, uh, let's see here. Uh, I want to say about a month and a half ago.
August 16th.
August 16th, right. And we were hoping to get a response by September 8th. But a lot has been going on, but it is on their agenda tomorrow, as is the tree policy revisions.
So were we made aware that this was going on their agenda?
Um, I can't say specifically, but, you know, we keep our eye on the agenda, and I think maybe you let us know too that it was coming up. Somebody mentioned it to us, and then we followed up on it. Andrew Dennyton might have sent, said something. He's the chair, Select Board. I can't specifically recall, but we try to keep our.
He didn't say it to me. I was just.
No.
Wondering.
No. I think when I looked for the tree policy on the agenda, I saw the Public Works Planning Board. But also just to reiterate that the new Public Works Director, Bill Kundoff, when he attended the last meeting, which was really nice, and explained a lot of things, he, he wanted to reserve comment until he was a little bit more familiar with the town to see how he could really provide valuable input that was, you know, based on knowledge of what's going on. So I think that'll be a big plus when we have his input. So that's something to look forward to.
Yeah, the reason I asked is because we had asked for a response from the board and we didn't get one. And we also didn't know what was going on their agenda, so we're not, although we're posted to discuss the public shade tree policy tomorrow, we're not posted to discuss this, which is unfortunate. Ms. Hulahan.
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Maria.
No, no comments. I remain hopeful and eager to help.
Ms. Braschio?
No comments. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience?
Currently have 11 attendees and no hands raised.
Yes, ma'am. Can I speak here? You may. You said you're posted tomorrow night, but not for the agenda item you wish you could speak to.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm very sorry. Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road. You said you were posted tomorrow night, but not for the agenda item that you now know you wish you could speak to?
Correct.
I've been informed that you can amend your agenda up to a few minutes before the meeting. It's not advisable, but if you have new information that you didn't know at the time you were posting, it's absolutely legal to amend your agenda in less than 48 hours. And you can check that with, is it the Secretary of State? But, so if you wanted to, you could, is what I have been told, and we have done. Right, but it's not advised, especially if it's something that there's, yeah, there's believed to be interest in. But I don't, should we amend our agenda for tomorrow?
It's hard to say. I think if it is a contentious subject, which I think we know coming into it, it may be. I, I don't know if we just do the tree here policy and we speak on behalf of ourselves, not as Planning Board, during, you know, whenever they open up for comment. That's my suggestion right now. I would worry.
Okay. We would have to be careful if there's a quorum in the room, even if you're speaking as yourself. It could be construed as deliberation.
I'm planning to be on Zoom. Does that matter?
Any, no comment? Ms. Braschio?
I would probably post it, Mimi. My concern is just what you said, that we have to be careful unless we, you know, if we take the chance that there's three people in the room, if we know there's going to be three people in the room for that discussion, it might be wise to revise, but if we don't think, then I guess leave it status quo.
Usually, we haven't revised agendas with anything new within 48 hours of the meeting. If it's like tweaking something that's already on the agenda, I've done that. We've done that. But I, I, I can't really say that I've added anything within 48 hours. That's a totally new topic. It's been on the Planning Board agenda previously, I believe, but that doesn't mean anything. So I could, I, I, I respect Freddie's input. I'm just not sure. I haven't seen it myself, but we could ask Mr. Hegarty.
Well, like, so Freddie's correct. It can be done. It's new information that we didn't have.
Yeah, that's right. If you have new information that, yeah.
The only thing is, I don't know what's being discussed or what's, so, so it's difficult. But to Lisa's point, to cover ourselves, it might be good to just post, and we can just adjourn and leave if, if there's nothing for us to, nothing for us to add.
All right, so we'll do that first thing in the morning. We'll revise it, add the same, we'll put the same language that's on the Select Board agenda and make it the, in the same order, and repost it. And then we'll pop it up on the Dropbox for everybody, but it'll be posted anyway.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yep. So we still have some time. Should we approve minutes?
I make a motion to approve the August 28th, 2023 Planning Board minutes.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Lutrelle, yes?
Hulahan, yes.
Demuria, yes?
Braschio, yes.
So everybody's aware, our Planning Board member, Jesse Stein, will be joining us approximately around 7:00 PM. That's why there's only four members here.
Do you want to start into your planner's report?
Okay, let's do this. You might want to speak to this, but it's with great sadness that I've heard that Mr. Whitney Beals has passed. I believe it was yesterday, and he had been struggling with some health issues. So we received an email, um, family letting various people know of this. So our condolences, and I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add.
I'm very saddened, and I had, prior to being on the, the Planning Board, I was on the Open Space Preservation Commission for 13 years and, you know, looked to Wit, who was the president of SOLF, for his knowledge on open space preservation and environmental preservation. He added so much to this town of Southborough, and he'll be greatly missed.
Yeah, I'd just like to give my thoughts and prayers to the family as well. Wit was an icon in this town. And he and the Beals' property and all they've done in generous donations to our town and giving back in allowing the public to use all their land. And it's just with tremendous sadness, so I hope they find peace, and it's devastating news.
I'll just add my condolences for the family. I, I only personally knew Wit for a year, but knew of him, and he was a giant in the community. And when I met him, he welcomed me like I knew him forever. And I'll always remind, remember him fondly. But we have so much in this town that will remind us of him. Hope we missed.
Ms. Braschio?
Thank you. Also, deepest condolences. I also was on Open Space, and that's how I had the opportunity to meet Wit and his family. He was a true steward of this town in so many ways, just not on a conservation side. Very thankful to all of the things and the conversations I had with him, the things I learned. So prayers and deepest sympathies for the family. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, in the planner's report, we have a job posting for payroll and benefits coordinator. Kristen, Kristen Paskeen is given her resignation. She's moving on to new adventures. So it's posted on the town website, so if anybody knows anybody who could be interested, Vanessa Hale would appreciate any referrals. The town has been working on updating job descriptions for the various positions of the staff. So we've received, if you recall, about a year and a half, two years ago, we worked on revising some of the language to make it more standardized. So the consultant who's working on that provided standard job descriptions back. So we have to provide any revisions by October 8th to, back to Vanessa Hale. I believe she's the one who's, back to Melanie Atsuka, the executive assistant to the town administrator. So we have a meeting on October 2nd, so I'm hoping that perhaps I could work with Mimi on revising some of the language and then provide it to the Planning Board members at the October 2nd meeting for any additional comments. So I can send that around already if you already want to look at it. But it would be for Colleen's position, business administrator, one to planning, and for mine is town planner. And again, it's just to make formats, and so everybody has, you know, it's not all over the place, 20 different styles. And then just our chance to add anything or remove anything that we don't feel should be in there. So if the, if the Planning Boards are all right with that, I could initially work with Mimi on it directly.
Are your job descriptions each 20 pages long?
Uh, almost. They're pretty long, though, I mean, for job descriptions, so they're kind of the standard you see.
There's a lot of stuff that you two do.
Thanks. Um, the assessor's office is closed to the public on Fridays now, so everybody's aware of that. They are doing work so they can get some work done, and so that. They are doing work so they can get some work done and so that's a new update. It's budget time coming up next month, so we're going to start working on the planning board budget for this year. I have ARPA funds, some of which we already used for the postcard flyer, the postcard for MBTA communities. I had contacted one consultant for the deed research database, but they don't have enough staff and so have declined to take that on. So I'm going to be searching for maybe three firms who do similar work, who have good relationships with an attorney who can provide that support. Because if you recall, there was a big component of that project that relied on an attorney doing research for that. So that's in the works. As Debbie mentioned, there's a library forum September 27th at 7:00 PM after the MBTA Communities Forum. So if everybody's aware of that. Let's see here. That's going to be another topic. That's the ARPA. The ZBA approached me with some information about a zoning amendment for special permit lapse times. So typically, the planning board, like special permit for low-impact development, we have a two-year lapse if they don't start the work. That's generally the number of years we've been using, but a lot of areas and a lot of the special permits are through the zoning board of appeals. So we're in conversation about that and I had recommended that they perhaps take on the Warren article and let them know that zoning amendments come before the planning board for public hearings as a requirement. So I spoke with Dave Williams, he's the chair, so he's going to speak back with his board and then figure out what to do on how they want to approach that. And I sent him that DHCD guideline so that he sees the process of zoning amendments. And I think, let's see what else we have here.
So we have discussed changing this special permit bylaw in the past. There was discussion of having special permits that require site plans, have the planning board be the special permit granting authority. I don't know if that's something that, if, if there's going to be a change made to the special permit, if the board would like to. Because then it, it streamlines permitting.
So we could probably add that as an agenda item in the near future for the planning board to mull it over and see if that's the direction and then start discussion with the ZBA to see what they thought about that. Maybe the select board, keep them in the loop so they know as well that that's an intent. That's a relatively significant shift, I think. Okay, so we'll focus on that. The open space monitoring for fiscal year '23, we're going to be getting them on the agenda within, probably in October sometime, to review their report. That's kind of the standard timeframe. I can say that they did the seven locations and then were able to add an eighth location, which is great. So we got a lot of bang for that buck this year. And then we'll be selecting some new locations for next year, for this fiscal year. And that's, that's, what else was that I had in here?
The one thing you had on the agenda was zoning map update.
Yes, I'm still working to get a little bit of bandwidth because it's going to take like a three-quarters of a day to look at all the boundaries, just to make sure they're either in the center of the road where they're supposed to be or follow a property line. So I really have to look at it close with no interruption. So I'll get there. It's coming. We're this close. And that's, I think that's what we have. Oh, project updates. The residents of Park Central submitted their comprehensive permit to the building department, building commissioner, this morning. So I got a good call letting me know that and then I followed up with the town administrator to let him know and just to make sure that maybe town council's aware of it as well. Because we do have a new building commissioner who maybe doesn't know the whole history of the past project. So if town council's on board right away, he'd probably get some good help there.
And Lara did send the application around.
Yes, and just note that it takes a while to open because it's 419 megabytes. So you have to kind of get to it and then let it churn.
Yeah.
Okay, but she is going to provide planning department with one full-size copy and I believe five half-size copies. I'll double check. So if anybody else wants a full-size copy, let me know because then I'll request it from her. Because she has 26 copies to distribute.
Okay.
Which is what's required.
So I did respond to her, letting her know that we were meeting tonight and so we wouldn't be able to comment on it, but we're meeting October 2nd and we will, that will be on the agenda then and we'll submit our comments after that.
And if this is accepted, they have a 30-day window to open a hearing.
So didn't she say they're starting on October 11th? Isn't there already a hearing?
Yeah, I think that's what the goal is, but they have to check the application for completeness.
Oh, okay.
Same as we do. And then that, so that's the anticipated goal, I think, from my understanding.
That was 953 pages, that application? Just as enough where I need a little bit of time to carve out.
Okay. So Jessie Stein has joined us at 7:00 PM via Zoom.
So you all set, Karina?
I am.
Welcome, Jessie. So 7:00 PM, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for 14 Main Street special permit in the downtown district and a discussion on 14 Main Street minor site plan review. Do you want to bring us up to date on this, Karina?
So I'll start by reading the public hearing notice. For 14 Main Street Downtown District Special Permit per Section 174-8.12(c)(6) of the Southborough Zoning Code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, September 18th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Thomas J. McCall of Hearing Room, Second Floor Townhouse. 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. Consider the application of West Suburban GI in downtown districts, for downtown district special permit for a medical office. The hearing concerns an interior build-out on the first floor for the medical office with four exam rooms, a nurse workstation, and other medical equipment is needed. Copy of the plans and application may be reviewed at the planning board's webpage or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting can do so in person or via Zoom remote participation by going online to the link at mass.southboroughcivicplus.com/674. Actually, it's, if you go to the town website and it's the virtual meetings link there. Mimi Luttrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. So this application was received. Just a quick rundown. On August 17th, it was filed with the, actually, there's two applications. There's a minor site plan, which is not a public hearing, but a discussion with the planning board. And then there's a special permit for the downtown district. In the new downtown district, a medical office is required to get a special permit specifically. So that was, that, both applications were filed with the town clerk on August 23rd along with a legal ad. Legal ad was provided to the newspaper and published on September 1st, which is a Friday, atypical because the Monday was a holiday, and then also on September 11th. The legal ad was also sent to towns and agencies as required by state statute. Submission one was distributed to the town departments and we received three departments' feedback. The first was from the Board of Health indicating that the Board of Health approved a variance on the septic regulations, their August 15th Board of Health, for the change of use to the doctor's office. A doctor's office requires more flow capacity than standard offices. So the applicant went to the Board of Health requesting a variance because of the, they explained the intent is not to do the clinical work. They're like, they're going to be using Southborough Medical Facility for those types of activities, but these offices would be more for consultation. And in doing that, I was hoping to get a copy of the signed decision today, but the Board of Health canceled their meeting for this month and they needed, the admin needed one more signature. So as soon as she gets that, she'll be submitting a copy of that to the planning department. One of the, the condition was that, that it would be revisited in one year to determine the water capacity or the flow.
The actual flow.
The actual flow usage at that, at that time, to make sure that it is in fact not inundating the existing system.
Yep.
That has been there for a while. We also received comments back from the Southborough Public Access Committee. For those who aren't aware of it, that's formerly like the ADA for accessibility. And they had comments regarding the van parking, which under the Architectural Access Board does not require a handicapped van accessible space, but the federal level does. Our code says the AAB version. So he just commented that, how that van accessible space would be used, potentially having to back into the designated space so that where the people leave the van, it's on side that's open. We did receive feedback from the building commissioner who opined on the parking that was proposed and he was satisfied with the design and the way the parking was. We received email back from the Economic Development Committee. They had no concerns or comments for this project. And I did receive a call from Via Butter, 10 Main Street, 10 and 12 Main Street, Ray Hokinson. So just so you're aware, the driveway access into the property is shared with Via Butter for 12 Main Street. And the town requires in their code a 22-foot wide aisle. 12 feet of that would have to have some kind of an agreement. And today we received a document of recorded easement to you, for the, for this use, to use that driveway while they are there. So that's anything new. And so we did receive the green cards for the butter notification and mailing receipts. And that brings us to this evening. I just want to make note that if the planning board doesn't have a decision for this evening, the applicant will probably need to request a, extension request for the minor site plan because minor site plan has a 30-day window. And if they don't come to decide, and we have a form that you would just sign and the planning board signs in order to get you to the next meeting. Okay? So that's the.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Doug Troyer. I represent the owners of the property, 14 Main Street, DDC LLC. With me tonight is Bill Grealish from Phase Zero Design, who is project engineer. Also Julie DeGuey is here from Phase Zero as well. Christine Miller is the office manager for the proposed medical use. And I believe Dr. Donahue was going to be on Zoom. I don't see him up there. We have, the really only demonstrative that we have is a site plan. I have it on a memory stick, but I don't know if you want to, we could put it up or you guys have it. I also have one by 17s. I don't know.
Yeah, Colleen can share it. Yeah, Colleen can share it. Nope, it's the same thing. It's the site plan.
Yeah, it's the site plan.
Just give her a second to pull that up.
Yeah, not a problem.
Excuse me, Mimi, there's a hand raised in the audience. I don't know if that's Dr. Donahue.
It is. I see it's, it's Dan. Very top.
Thank you, Lisa.
Great, thank you so much. Excellent. So to begin with, Karina did an excellent job, as I imagine is usually the case, in describing exactly what we are here, we're here for. We own, my clients purchased 14 Main Street back in March of 2023. The prior use was that of a business use. I believe a law firm had been in that building. The building's been around for some time. We have been before the historic commission as well and obtained approval from them to do what we are looking to do here. 14 Main Street is operated and owned, in essence, by two doctors. They are looking to have their affiliate entity called West Suburban GI operate a, a medical use out of the building on the first floor of the building. The second floor is going to maintain a business use. In essence, this is business use in this district, in the downtown district, which was recently approved, I believe, last year or a year and a half ago, basically permit business use as a right, but medical use does require a special permit from the planning board. The type of use in which they are looking to do here is more akin to a business use. It's more the business operations of a medical use than the actual procedures and things of that nature. In essence, there's two doctors on site. They are looking to have approximately about eight patients a day. They have staff, they have a physician's assistant who's on site as well during the process. A patient comes in pursuant to a regularly scheduled appointment. They check in and then are proceeded to an examination room where vitals are taken. And these are primary vitals, blood, weight, temperature, things along those lines. There's no blood test that's taken on site and again, no procedures are performed at all. The doctor then comes in and they discuss diagnoses, go over certain medical records and come to a decision of a plan as to what the next steps are and if a procedure is necessary. If procedures are necessary, they are performed off-site at another time. In essence, it's a nine-to-five operation. They're not looking to work on the weekends and they are looking to maintain the integrity of the building and looking to do primarily just internal changes to the first floor, a little bit to the second floor, but the first floor to set up the, the medical examination rooms and so on and so forth, which we'll get into in a little bit. They, the two doctors are Southborough residents, longtime Southborough residents. They have operated a practice, they actually opened this practice about two years ago and the goal is to find a setting where they can have patients come to a comfortable setting to perform these types of discussions of going over medical records and diagnosis and plans and so on and so forth. And this property came on the market and they absolutely fell in love with it and purchased it. They later learned some of the issues in which they, they need to overcome. They have gone before the Board of Health and obtained the septic. We believe that before the Board of Health, it wasn't as much of a concern, given the fact that they weren't looking to do procedures, looking at they're just trying to keep it to a consultation-type facility. We also entered into an easement agreement with our neighbor at 12 Main Street, which is also owned by 10 Main Street. We found out that no, while the property had been utilized as part of the driveway area for many, many years, we found out that no, no formal agreement had ever been entered into. And we were successful in having conversations with our neighbor who agreed to grant us an easement, which we obtained last week and I recorded with Registry of Deeds last, last Friday. We believe that the medical use is consistent in the downtown district. We believe that this type of medical use will not impair the neighborhood and will be. be consistent with what this town is looking in a downtown district. So with regard to the special permit, we're asking this board to grant a special permit, permitting them to operate a medical use out of this facility. And we also do have a minor site plan application that I'm going to turn over the bill and kind of have him go through some of the specifics, and then love to hear any questions that the board may have and more, more willing to basically answer those.
Good evening. The basic intent of the project, to bring it up, would be to re-stripe the existing paved area. The intent isn't to add any new paving, any new features. It's an existing paved area. We were striping it, some ADA parking. The one element through the zoning that we were asking for waivers on is the plantings. There isn't a lot of area on the site, as it's a non-conforming lot to start with, to actually put 20-foot buffer zones of landscaping. That's the basic intent of what's proposed on the site. So the site plan actually shows pretty much all the existing conditions, any notes pertinent to zoning. Are there any big questions relative to the site, of what's on there, or things that you're seeing or not seeing?
You're all set, so we'll go through the board. Mr. Stein.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Ms. Houlihan.
Yes, specific to lighting?
Yes.
And also signs, if you're planning either.
No exterior signs are proposed. There was an existing blade sign on the front. Their intent would be to just to put a blade sign back up on top. But there's no parking lot lighting. It's all going to be building-mounted. There's no proposed new things to be added.
So building-mounted lighting, I think we still need to see. So we have no floodlight, no wall packs. Those are prohibited.
Yes.
By our outdoor illumination. And so we still need to check to make sure, right, in either minor site, that there's no lighting trespass, recognizing it's in, it's in the Business Village District. But we just, would still need to see the lighting plan to make sure from a safety perspective and our application.
It's existing, they're not adding any additional lighting to the site at all. It would be all pre-existing. If there is any violations of it, we're happy to basically take a look into it and rectify that, but I don't believe we're looking at any lighting.
They're not adding any new, but the ramp and the exit doors would need to have any exit light for evening when they exited.
Right. I think we still need to be able to see what that is, what you're proposing for those. And then when you say you're going to mount a sign on site, a sign on top, what does that mean?
Blade sign, the very front of the top of the page.
Do you mind shrinking the site plan just a bit?
I also have this showing too.
Oh. Yes. There's a little post sticking out on the left-hand side of the facade there. They're going to just mount a small one-by-two-foot shingle sign.
So you see that pole that sticks off to the far left of that building?
Right there.
There was an existing square sign that hung from that, kind of like a real, you know, similar to what you would see on a Realtor, but a much nicer sign than.
The dry cleaners had one up there.
But it's, that's the only signage which they're proposing.
If you go back in time, you'd be able to see the dry cleaner sign.
And whatever signage they will do, will comply with the signage by laws.
Yep.
Okay.
Separate permit.
And no lighting for the signage as expected, given the hours?
Yeah, no.
I would like to just point out, since we're on this topic, that this type of sign is common in the, in the Business Village District, which is now the downtown district. If you go close to the train station at the corner of Newton, yeah, they have those same signs. And when a new business moves in, they use that same thing and just replace their sign there.
Perfect. Thank you.
And just to be clear, are you looking for a photometric plan to show? We're, basically the only lighting that's on this, this property is on the building, and it's existing lighting. We may add two lights that go onto the building to basically illuminate the ADA.
Just, just the parking area.
There is no pole signs, there's no.
No tripping hazard, two-foot candles per square foot.
So our outdoor illumination now uses the bug rating. So we've upgraded to dark skies initiative. So if you check out 174.2, our lighting policy, sorry, 12.1, 174-12.1, we've updated our outdoor illumination. I mean, I don't think you, by, by requirement, you would need a photometric plan, but I think the bug rating is, it's basically, it takes this, the area, and you have an area to work with, and you need to just make sure that the bug rating doesn't exceed that area that you're working with. I would default to Karina's and Mimi's requirements on a photometric plan because it.
If you could possibly speak to the fixture and the, the wattage or the lumens of the bulbs you're proposing, to see if that triggers applicability of.
Okay.
Yeah. Because there are thresholds there.
Yes. I would have to verify that one. We actually didn't take the fixture apart. It was already there.
Yeah. If you replace bulbs, what do you, what are you putting there? Are you putting back?
If it's a brand-new fixture, it would be an LED downward.
In essence.
Just enough to get non-tripping hazard at night if they left.
Yeah.
Typically, it's about two-foot candles per square foot.
And to be quite honest, it's a nine-to-five operation. I don't believe that anything is going to be illuminated in the evening for this operation. That's one of the primary reasons we really didn't focus on the lighting aspect of it. The only light that I understand is there is a floodlight, basically focusing down into the parking area, and there may be.
Any light on the front?
Yeah. And it's what is there currently. They're not looking to propose to add any additional lighting, and the operations are nine-to-five. So we're not looking at any exterior lighting after 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and they are closed on the weekends.
So obviously, the winter, it gets a lot darker than five. So yeah, so that's the only challenge too. And so I just want you to be aware of the outdoor illumination. It does, we just, we prohibit barn lights, non-shielded wall packs, and floodlights. So even though it's an existing structure, because you're coming through my, minor site plan, we need to make sure that you're up to date with the regulations.
Absolutely.
You can always add the contingency, that if it's there, we'll remove it and put on a requirement if it's not.
And just a little bit of a factual, the reason why any client purchased property in March, they were under the impression, they unfortunately were not advised appropriately of the fact that this use in which they were looking to do was not a use in which it was permitted in town. As a result, they were looking to depart from their prior lease. They are now in a situation of going through this. They engaged my offices, as well as Phase Zero, to basically do what needed to be done, dot the i's, cross their t's. We believe we have now kind of jumped through some major hurdles to get the variance from Board of Health and also the easement agreement with the Abutter. And we're hopeful that if this board is, is favorable of this application, that any conditions where lighting or something along those lines may be put in as a condition to which we can rectify if necessary and not delay if possible for a lighting plan. But again, we want to dot our i's, cross our t's, and do what this board needs us to do to, to do it. So I appreciate the comment, and we will definitely take a look at that.
Thanks, Doug. Thanks, Bill. My only comment is I would be receptive of supporting this. I think it's, it would be nice to bring in the business, they're local Southborough residents, and I'm fine with a contingency.
Thank you.
Mr. Maria.
I'm wondering if you can just expand a little bit more about the medical use and also the interaction with the Board of Health.
I'll talk about the medical use, and I'll let Bill talk about the Board of Health. So the medical use, and Christine can talk directly about it as well, but in essence, the medical use is the first floor of the property. They're looking to fit out the first floor to be, basically have, how many exam rooms are?
There'll be four exam rooms. And there's two, there's three providers, there's.
Christine, can I just ask you to come up to the desk and then just identify yourself just for, because we have a recording clerk who has to.
My name's Christine Miller. I am the office manager and part-owner of 14 Main Street. The medical use, like we're saying, is four exam rooms. There's basically two and a half providers. There's two doctors, one of which is part-time, and then a physician's assistant. We do see patients within the clinic setting. As Doug was saying previously, you know, they come, they check in, the medical assistant takes them into the exam room, does the vitals, the blood pressure, the, you know, height, weight, pulse ox, and then they just have a discussion with the doctor. There are no procedures performed on-site. Again, when we say we average eight patients a day, that's eight patients over the two and a half providers. So it's not eight per provider. So it's, you know, minimal use within there.
And I believe the, and the upstairs will be used for business purposes for the doctors' use. The primary use of this, this building is to provide a very comfortable location where the doctors can work on the second floor, but also see their patients during non-procedural hours to go over certain medical diagnoses and, and basically do so in such a comfortable, comfortable facility. That was one of the main reasons they wanted to do, do it in this historical structure as well as off of Main Street.
So the upstairs will be office space then?
Office space, and then at no time does a pa, a patient at no time is, is really removing clothing at all on the site either. So it's really, it's not like going and getting a physical where you, where they come in and do your vitals, and then they basically perform the actual physical on you here. It's just really the nurse that comes in for your vitals, and then basically the doctor comes in and you're just having a consultation. You're not having any procedures being, being conducted on-site. Those are being done on-site.
So I, I think it's a creative use for the space, to be honest. It is a beautiful, beautiful space as well. I guess I have a concern about the medical, only in that what if this, your business leaves and another comes in for medical use, and it's not a change in use, and they're taking bloods and doing other things?
They would have to, my understanding is if anyone would basically change the type of uses in, in there, they would have to come back before this board. The other thing is, is if this facility leaves, the easement in which we obtained is engrossed, so it would leave with the, with, with the practice as well.
Can I check that then with the board? So if it's a medical use and it's allowed, and let's say two years you leave and the next medical use comes in, but they're drawing bloods, and there's urine, and there's blood collection, and lab core, and all that stuff, I think that would be a same use. So I just want to check that that would be my only concern.
Yeah, it's a, what this is, is a medical office. And in speaking with the building commissioner early on, I, I remember us discussing that it's not lab work. So that's a different use. If you're doing blood-taking or operations, and so it's, in the downtown district, it says medical use, but there are other uses that are called laboratory or, I can't think of it right now, but it's very, it's, it's different in offices.
So Karina.
So any, any use.
Could we, Karina, could we just put in the conditions, something that addresses what Deb is talking about, that per these hearings, the use of the facility is really clerical almost in nature? And I'm not sure how we would word it, but I think that Deb raises a good point that we're sort of, you know, breezing through this here on the basis of it not being, you know, heavy medical use.
Thank you, Jesse. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I didn't see you, so.
Oh, no. I'm on TV.
But that, that I think would, would satisfy me. So I understand it's, it's consultation. I'm just concerned if we allow a medical use that it, I don't exactly know what are the different types of medical uses? Is there medical laboratory? Is there medical clinical?
So I think it's non-amblatory and ambulatory? Is that what the definition was in one of? I'm going to look really quickly. Hold on a second.
The current zoning had a classification for any clinic or dentistry building. And I meant to use a special permit to use that within this district. So I believe any use that comes in would also need a special permit. As you're not changing the use or changing the zoning, they're allowing this, this function within this zone by special permit.
The other thing to keep in mind is the, the variance in which we got a septic as well. If this does turn into a facility that's, that is doing procedures, there's going to be more of a strain on a septic to which we're going to have to go back before them as well. The easement in which we have obtained from the Abutter is for this office practice group, and once they sell, sell the property, that easement would go away, and anybody who comes onto the property would have to work with the Abutter at that, that point in order to utilize that, that driveway area. So the neighbor is actually also very satisfied with the fact of what we are looking to do there and the type of use in which we're looking to do there. So there's many protective measures that the town would have if somebody, if we wanted to, for say, basically do additional medical procedures on the site, we would have to come back to the board for additional permission to basically allow that additional use.
If it's certainly, if it's in the condition, I appreciate what you're saying. I guess my concern is if it's a different proponent in the future. I like the idea of conditioning to be crystal clear that it's not for clinical use or laboratory use.
That's fine.
And I think that's the correct terminology. If we're talking medical versus clinical.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that I understand that properly.
Yeah, I'm just trying to take a, trying to.
The language they use is clinic or medical testing laboratory. But even if you're drawing like fluids and sending them out, like if you're using, like, I don't know if we use something like, you know, human body fluids in our conditions. I, I know it's, but technically, that's what it is. It's a, a medical waste.
I think we should probably be pretty specific, because in the downtown district criteria, it says special permit for medical or dental office. And a dental office is probably much more demanding on the septic system than a consulting office. And so the Board of Health has a, having jurisdiction over that, if they change their use in that sense, the septic system will likely not work, and they would not approve it for that. The problem is, if we don't condition it, we don't make a distinction between medical office and dental office and whatever it's changing to under medical, and it could be misconstrued. So we can clearly draft a, a condition that says it may be for this particular, for, Suburban GI, this, this special permit runs with that business as opposed to with the property?
Legally, I'm not sure if that's going to work, because it runs with the land no matter what from a legal perspective. I think you can put a condition there saying that this medical use cannot, does not include clinical or, what was the other?
Oh, restrict, I see what you're saying. Instead of.
Put a condition, put a condition in the basically that says that the special permit is granted, subject to a condition that no.
Well, we're clinics.
What's the language you use? It was clinical and something along those lines.
Sorry, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Ms. Houlihan, right.
Oh.
No, I, well, in, in some of these, it says clinical or medical testing laboratories, but I think it's, it's drawing or utilization of, of human fluids, right? Because it's blood and urine essentially, and that they're not using that. So it restricts, the condition only allows for consultative and, and vitals and no use of drawing human or extracting human fluids. Would you be fine with something to that degree?
I think that'd be fine without seeking, yeah, that, that, something along those lines, or no, no medical procedures shall be performed on-site, no clinical or medical procedures shall be performed on-site. The problem with that is what is actually.
Right, like a urine, a urinalysis is not a medical procedure, and it's so.
So that's the problem, so that's why I'm trying to figure out what's the best terminology to.
Well, I think in your project narrative, you described that the applicant seeks to have West Suburban GI, an affiliated entity with an, with the applicant, operate a medical use consisting of office visits and consultation with patients out of the first floor. Office visits and consultation, so if we could, because office visits are office visits.
So what about no laboratory tests? I mean, it's all about like taking tissue samples or urine or blood, as Marnie was saying.
Yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying, Karina, but you're still, it still opens it up. So I, I mean, I think if we're subject, we can maybe table this and just know that we're all on the same page and we're working towards a solution, but we don't have to belabor in wordsmith right now.
Yeah. And I can probably consult with the building commissioner, code enforcement officer, for some language for that condition.
And we'll put in a previous condition for a further discussion once you guys, okay, fair enough.
All set, Mr. Maria? Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for a very complete package. It was very great to see. I'm supportive of the use as well as very appreciative to see residents of the town. I'm supportive of the use as well as very appreciative to see residents of the town make an additional investment, not just from living here as a resident, but also in a business in the town. So that's very much appreciated as well. Most of my questions were already answered. I had a question on the ADA parking as well. I'm satisfied with that as well and I'm supportive of the waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's, it's a beautiful building and I'm glad to see something going in there. And is this our first permit under the downtown district? Our maiden voyage.
We're the Guinea pig.
You get a badge.
We're the Guinea pig. Would have been much easier before the amendment, but we are here now. We're happy to be the, the Guinea pig.
Yes, I'm also in, in support of this and happy to see it. My questions have been answered mostly. I just would like to see, there was some trees on, most of the trees aren't on your property, but there's some in the, or is it southwest corner? To make sure that those are to remain, I would have that as a condition since most of landscaping is being waived because there's really no room for anything. At least we'll know that those can somewhat comply with the landscaping.
Yep, that's acceptable. Thank you.
And that's all that I have.
Let me just see if there's any public.
Oh, yes. Any public comment?
We have 15 attendees. Apparently no hands raised.
Anyone on Zoom, if you have any question or comment on this application, if you could raise your hand? Seeing none.
So just to be clear, if the planning board votes to approve minor site plan and the special permit for the downtown district, we would have three conditions. That the lighting comply with the outdoor illumination bylaw and evidence of such will be presented to the planning department. Number two, we will have a condition on defining the medical office use for this particular. Yeah, defining and restricted. We'll come up with some language and we'll go back and forth on that. And then the trees in the southwest corner to remain. Okay. And then we have a list of waivers, just so you're aware of that, at the end of the project narrative. Attachment A. And these are waivers from the minor site plan for one, two, three, four, five, like six, one, two, three, six references to landscaping, various landscaping.
So do you want to vote on the waivers now?
So I, the motion is to approve the waivers as written.
Second. Any further discussion? Any question? Is that, does that suffice? Or do we need to approve them each individually?
Because it's Zoom, you have to do a roll. No, I think you can, we have the document.
Okay.
And they'll be incorporated into the decision that they're granted and I'm. I'm sorry. The waivers will be incorporated into decision, so I believe you can vote on the whole set of six.
So I, I would just add per attachment A.
Six waivers.
Yep, so moved.
Okay. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
And make a motion, the planning board approve 14 Main Street special permit downtown district and minor site plan.
Second, with conditions, second.
With, thank you. Agreed.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Just real quick for the record, I do want to say how fortunate you guys are to have the staff. They really walked me through.
Oh, thank you.
It's my first time appearing in Southborough and you guys, very strict and it, it gets things done appropriately and it's, I just want to say that Ms. Quinn went above and beyond to help walk me through the applications, spent time with me because other towns are a little more lenient, but I wanted to make sure that we did everything right and I really appreciate your time and effort and.
Thank you, thank you for mentioning that. Appreciate that.
You guys are lucky.
Thank you for the feedback. Thank you. And that, that enables us to approve things with one hearing.
And just so you know, I'll draft up a decision and then it'll be reviewed and then once it's all set, Mimi will sign it and then it gets filed with the town clerk and then there's a 20-day appeal period.
Yeah, if you want to have discussion about the language, I'd be glad.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mimi?
Yes.
Do we need to close the public hearing?
Oh, shoot. We do.
Thank you.
Sorry, my fault. This is what happens when I go on Zoom instead of person. Make a motion to close the public hearing for 14 Main Street.
Second. I have a motion and a second and need discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, St. Mark's School Parking Lot, major site plan. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, how are you? Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. My name is Anthony Cleaves, I'm with Haley Ward.
Karina's just going to bring the board up to date and then, then you'll be on.
Sure, sorry about that.
There's some formality to that.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
We ready for this one?
Yep.
Okay. This is a public hearing notice for St. Mark's new parking lot at Marlborough Road and St. Mark's Street, major site plan approval. Per section 174-10 of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, September 18th, 2023 at 7:05 PM in the Thomas J. McCalliff Hearing Room, second floor townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. To consider the application of St. Mark's School regarding parking improvements for major site plan approval. The hearing concerns a proposal to add a new parking at the intersection of Marlborough Road and St. Mark's Street. A copy of the plans and applications may be reviewed at the planning office at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours or on the planning board's webpage. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed changes should appear at the time and place designated. Those wishing to participate, to watch or participate remotely may do so by accessing the meeting link on the town's website for virtual meetings. Mimi Latrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. Okay. Now.
Oh, do you want to convene the select board?
Yep.
Andrew, Andrew Dennington for the select board at 7:44, calling to order the select board meeting.
Okay. Thanks for doing that, Andrew. Almost forgot. Okay, so we received an application from St. Mark's School on August 11th and filed it with the town clerk on August 23rd. A submission was sent to Fussin O'Neil in order to get a task authorization, mini contract, which was received and signed on September 6th. The submission, number one, we call it, was supplemented with some lighting specifications and some clarifications and that was provided to the planning board and to town departments. The legal ad was filed with the town clerk and on August 29th, the legal ad was provided to the applicant for a butter notification and published in the newspaper on September 1st, which was a Friday due to the holiday on Monday, and on September 11th for the second publication. It was, legal ad was provided to the towns and agencies as required. Green cards were received on the Thursday, last Thursday, prior to this meeting. I just want to note that on September 14th, the Conservation Commission will be hearing your stormwater management permit. Well, that was last week. All right, so they already heard that.
They did.
I was confused, okay. The applicant has provided a landscape color rendering for presentation this evening, which we can put up when the time comes. And we did submit this application to town departments and I just want to let you know what we received at this point. From Conservation Commission, we received feedback that they were going to open their public hang for stormwater management permit on September 14th. From the fire department, we received, they reviewed the site plan and the fire department does not have any concerns with this site. From the Economic Development Committee, no comments from the EDC on this site. From the town administrators, office from the town administrator, no concerns. I think the proposed project will be improvement to St. Mark's School current use of the property for parking, more structured and definitely more attractive. I want to note that in receiving the application, there were some minor administrative items that needed to be addressed. So there is a comment list and I had indicated to the applicant, because they were, these were more administrative, that they could provide these, address these comments in a revised submission because we anticipate that. I followed up with Fussin O'Neil today, awaiting their review comments and they indicated that they anticipate having them by the end of this week. So as soon as they come in, we'll forward those to you so that you can take action on any revisions and anything else that the board may have for you this evening. And that brings us to this evening, public hearing, number one, for a major site plan approval for the parking lot.
Very good. Now you're on.
Thank you very much. My name is Anthony Cleaves, I'm with Haley Ward, civil engineers for the project.
My name is Brendan Carey, I'm with AT Lundt Associates and I am the landscape architect.
I'm Rob Kuklevich, I'm the Chief Financial Operations Officer at St. Mark's School. Thanks for meeting with us.
Yes, thank you again, thanks again for your time. So as you see on the, the rendering there, we have a proposed redevelopment of an existing parking lot for St. Mark's School. The area is located at the intersection of St. Mark's Street and Marlborough Road. I'm sure many are familiar with the area. This is part of the re-alignment of St. Mark's Street that the town is, is undertaking currently, realigning St. Mark's Street to more of a right angle intersection with Marlborough Road. As part of that, some land transfers had to occur between St. Mark's School and the town to accommodate that realignment of St. Mark's Street. As such, St. Mark's School is now preparing to redevelop that existing parking lot that was kind of in that area. So utilizing the former right-of-way of St. Mark's Street, which is kind of top left of your, of your plan there. And so the design is looking to coordinate with the town's design plans for St. Mark's Street where even to get copies of those, so the curb cut that we're proposing is in coordination with those design plans so that the work that's going on should hopefully coincide with what we're doing in, in that regards.
Before you continue.
Sure.
Kevin? I don't think so. I think we. He was part of, he wasn't able to be here this evening. He might be on monitoring. Oh, I see, yeah, so I think. I, he's, he's with us. He's here.
Yes, I'm here.
There we go.
Excuse me, Karina, I couldn't hear anything you said, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a member of their team that was in the attendees waiting room that I had to ask if they wanted him elevated to speak to this before they went on, just in case. So we did, we elevated Kevin Monkowitz.
Thank you.
So as, as part of the project, there is a little over 900 square feet reduction in impervious surface, just kind of reorganizing the parking, coordinating better with the new St. Mark's Street layout. As you can see, you're going to, we're going to come in off of the new St. Mark's Street and then come into perpendicular parking on either side of a maneuvering aisle. We have ADA parking spaces at the end of that, that parking area with new concrete sidewalks connecting from the ADA parking area, coordinating and connecting to the new sidewalks that are being installed on Marlborough Road, which helps facilitate St. Mark's community between this parking lot and it, a crosswalk that goes across Marlborough Road to St. Mark's School entrance. As part of the project, there's going to be some new trees planted for landscaping in and around the parking area. On the rendering that you have in, in front of you, trees that are with the plus sign in the middle are proposed trees and trees with the circle in the middle are existing. And also the, in this rendering plan, the new trees are shaded more of a light green and the existing are a dark green. So the area that you zoomed in there, for example, we have a, a large existing tree on the left-hand side that's going to be retained, going to work around that and not disturb that tree, correct? Yep. And then some of the lighter green trees that are shown, those are the new trees that are going to be proposed in and around that area. Also to, to help visually separate the parking lot from Marlborough Road, that green area between the parking lot and Marlborough Road is going to be a little bit of a raised earthen berm to provide a little bit of a visual separation between the parking area and, and Marlborough Road. Stormwater for the parking lot, we, we looked at it more of a low-impact development where the parking lot is going through sheet flow. If you're looking at the plan kind of left to right, where we're not going to have any curbing on the downhill side of the parking lot, we're going to have a stone filter edge, a little bit of pretreatment of the stormwater as it exit sheet flows off the parking area and then it's going to be captured by a grass swale along that side. You know, a flat grass swale. And then at the end of that flat grass swale will be a new deep sump-hooded catch basin and then that'll be piped to the new stormwater infrastructure that's being installed as part of the town's project. A brief overview for you. Happy to answer any questions, hopefully you have.
We're excited, just if I can add that I know our head of school, our principal head of school is excited too because from a life safety standpoint, the parking will be there. You don't, you can walk directly to the fields as opposed to having to cross the road, which you had to do before. So just one other important point for us from a life safety standpoint, which we like.
Very good. Mr. Stein?
All right, Karina, what's the story or what's the latest on Fussin O'Neil?
Oh, I spoke with them and they are going to provide a peer review by the end of this week.
Okay. I, I usually wait, it's like, unless anything jumps out at me. In this case, personally, nothing does. So appreciate the presentation and we'll see what the consultant has to say at this point. It's a little early for me to pose any questions. It's a little early for me to pose any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Houlihan.
No, I didn't have any questions. I think, I was looking for something specific on the lighting. I saw the photometric plan and I saw the requirements, but I didn't necessarily see like a specific lighting plan, unless I completely missed it. Okay. I...
We did have a photometric plan as the last sheet in the set on each of the site plans. It does show the locations of the light, the light poles, and then as, as Karina requested, additional cut sheets were submitted as, as part of the process.
Yes, so you, you should have the photometric plan, and then there was a supplemental...
All the cut sheets, I saw those, they were separate. But normally, I guess we see a separate page that's a lighting plan with some of the specifics. I saw the one light pole specific on the landscaping.
Yeah, this last photometric plan, right?
I see it, Marnie.
The very last sheet.
There's like, there's like, like, there's some de minimis spill.
And then...
I guess I'm just used to seeing a actual lighting plan, not just the photometric. There's usually a supplemental sheet that has the lighting plan with all the specs on one area, so we don't have to be juggling around and looking for it. I did see all the specs in the Dropbox. I've gone through all those, and the lumens, but there's usually some sort of, you know, the calculation. I can't even read this. I didn't, I didn't have time to read the big one, but I didn't even check to see if the calculations were fine. Obviously, the photometrics were fine from my perspective.
I didn't see them. The... It must have been...
It was in Dropbox, in the, yeah, it's a separate package of content.
And we, I thought we dropped these off to you as well.
We didn't have those in there. It was in the Dropbox.
No, not in the original package, but there was a supplemental, and then there was a stack of these that we...
I didn't receive that. I saw it in the Dropbox, though. That, that's it. I mean, other than that, I would also reserve my opinions for Fussin O'Neil. Thanks.
Marnie, are you, just to be clear, are you asking for like the bug rating ISO? It's like a topography of the lighting that shows the back light, up light, and the glare? And the lighting manufacturers usually can provide that to show that it meets the...
So they have all the bug ratings in that, so it's all included, but it's usually like, and I, I guess I could open this really big one just to see if the calculations are there. I just can't see it in my 11x17. It's time for a better prescription. Yeah, so our, our outdoor illumination calculation is through BUG. It's an outdoor skies, a dark skies initiative, and we updated 174-12.1 our outdoor illumination, and so it just has a different requirement for that lighting, which is BUG, which you've prepared it all, it's just really compiling it, so it's easy to look through and approve.
I think I emailed it, and then also put it. It's in with the original set, because by the time we sent these to you, I was able to replace the old lighting specs and put this new one in the set, but then the hard copies were dropped off later.
Right, so I have the specs. Like, I think the question is, what's in here?
You want to compile?
Is it traditional photometric plan, not the outdoor illumination bylaw requirement, which is a different, it's a bug rating, it's a bug calculation, and it's a different specification based on where you're putting your part, your lights in parking lot?
Yeah.
So that's what I'm asking for. Yeah.
Are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Maria.
Hi there, thanks for coming in. I noticed that there's two plans that we received in the planning board that have the same date, but they're not the exact same plan. One version went to Conservation Commission, and also is the smaller plan that we received that we end up posting, but it doesn't match this larger set. And in particular, I was looking at stormwater because I tuned in to the Conservation Commission the other day, and so that particular C-101 doesn't match, and so that, that I think is, is a problem, because when we refer to the August 7th plan, there can only be one plan. So the conservation, or the smaller plan that we received has some notes along the side that we didn't receive as part of this larger plan, but we have it electronically. We have several versions, is, is what I'm saying. So on C-101, which is stormwater plan?
Yep.
Yep. So our version that I'm looking at, this large copy, doesn't have some of the notations down the side, and yet the smaller version that you have, can I just look at that? Yeah, for example, for example, it says on the catch basin, roadway storm system being installed as part of improvements by others, and catch basin being installed as part of roadway improvements by others. And I was looking at it to see if it's hooked up to Route 85, if you could maybe explain that, although I know Conservation's gonna get to it. But then I realized that one plan doesn't match the other plan, at least for C-101.
So the larger copies that you received didn't have that information on that?
They don't have that information, and I only looked at that one. I didn't do a check to make sure everything was the same, but just because that they're different, we can only have one version.
Yeah, I think I just watched that, that layer probably maybe we just got, didn't print out on the larger copies, a different copy machine, so it's, it's the same plan. The design is, is, is no different. I see what you're saying, the labeling of the, the stormwater in Marlborough Road, and I, I can comment on that a little bit. So the only stormwater that we're adding is that dark black line, whereas a proposed catch basin, rim 321.9, and a proposed 12-inch HDPE drain, 50 feet. That's all we're adding for infrastructure. We're connecting into the infrastructure that the town is putting in.
So is it already connected to Route 85, to Corderville, then?
What, the, the stuff I just mentioned that we're installing?
Yeah, so there's one catch basin, and then there's a manhole or some kind of...
Right here.
So, so there's an existing catch basin right where the red pointer is?
Okay.
It was, it's existing today.
Yeah.
It's being part of the town's project.
Right.
It was, it's, it's installed now.
Right.
So all we're doing is putting in a new catch basin and connecting into, to that one. And that catch basin connects to the new infrastructure that was just put in in Marlborough Road.
Okay, so it's all connected, so you're, you're making your, I get you.
Yeah, so we're making our connection on St. Mark's property, but to the, to the town's system that was just installed.
Another thing I'd like to see on a future map is that none of the maps show town properties, so there's two parcels of property. One is formerly known as Lot C on the A&R, and there's also a stone wall that is under, oh my gosh, I never remember if it's called a lease, I think, or a permit, maybe, or lease to St. Mark's School, that are town-owned property. And I think it would be, this will be the official map of the area, so I think it would be good to show that. Do you show that on any plan? Did I miss?
On the existing conditions plan, it shows...
Right.
Those, those lots. And then on the...
Right.
On the other plans, those lot lines, the intermediate lot lines are, are shut off and just the exterior boundary is shown.
Okay. I mean, this will, you know, once it's approved, this will be the plan, so I think it would be good to see that. I notice also, like, it's not caught up yet with our assessors map, so that parcel C, Lot C, doesn't appear on the town assessors map, so, and neither, by the way, does the stone wall. And the reason I bring it up is because, just going back to the lighting for a second, is when you look at L1 on the lighting plan, and Marnie's the expert at this, I'm not, but because I don't see the town property, there is some spillage over onto town property and onto Route 85, as far as I can tell. So that's on L1. So if it was properly marked, and I kind of just, you know, the road goes straight and it just sort of tails off, so there's a, there's a little, I don't know if it's significant, but there's a little bit of...
Yeah, it's about .2-foot candles, it looks like.
Yeah. So that's what I was looking for, is to see if there's spillage on, in a budding property, so technically that is a budding. Yeah, and so on a lot of plans that I'm looking at, and I'm one of the newer members, that town-owned property is usually marked with something that says NF, and so I didn't see that on the locust map or anything like that that delineates where the town property is, so now or formerly, so it would be really good to see that on the map, since this will be the map that people will be using going forward. I don't think we'll be looking at the A&R map in the future. I just wanted to clarify with you that in, in your letter, you are stating that this is a redevelopment of an existing parking area, and that's not, I don't, I don't agree with that, actually. There is no approved parking area. There was, let's say, a makeshift kind of area that was used, but it's, it was, there was never an approved existing parking area. But nonetheless, there's a lot of, I think, factors that play into, you know, how did you arrive at the size of the parking lot? For example, what was brought to town meeting, I had counted 55 spaces, and so this is 35? Is that correct?
Yes.
35, and, you know, if you go on Google Maps, you'll see four, four cars in the previous lot, and yet when there's game day, you'll see a lot of buses. So there's a lot of factors, I know, and I just wanted to ask, you know, how, in terms of the size of the parking, I've reviewed other projects under Dover. Belmont School, for example, has a project where they're putting a building on the property and they're developing, you know, there's a lot, a parking lot, and that sort of thing, and they provide justification for how many people will be using the lot, what is the number of, you know, if it's a new library, how many, you know, what estimation of folks will be using the library, are there teachers that are gonna be parking in that lot? So I'm wondering, what are the factors for the size of the parking? I mean, it's reduced from what the town voted on, to be honest, but I'm wondering, how did you arrive at that, at that number to justify the size? Because currently, there is no approved lot.
I'll, I'll answer by saying, we try to, obviously, the previous plan had the whole triangle developed, and we thought that was a little much. We wanted more green space and separation from Marlborough Road, so we tried to, you know, one, not lose any trees, and two, get as much parking as we could on the site while not trying to really max out with a, a parking lot to the setbacks. So this number just seemed to work for the site, and while allowing us to get a decent-sized landscape buffer on, you know, all the public roads.
Will it, because on game day, there really is a lot of cars lining the street, and so do you think that the size will take care of that so that there would be no parking on, along the roadway?
Well, that's a good question. One of the things we're talking about is mitigating the risk by encouraging use of our day-student parking lot, which is just north on 85. And so this Sunday, we had a security officer there that was directing folks to that location where they can walk down south on 85, but they're able to park on St. Mark's School property. So that's one of the things we've talked about for moving forward, is moving, you know, if we move beyond, if there are more than 35 cars, then having that lot be used more effectively and more often is something we've talked about, is reducing that risk.
Having, okay, is there a sidewalk that connects to that lot?
There's not. There's a nice, open grass area between the stone wall and our buildings, but the sidewalk ends where this plan is shown.
I also want to ask about, so I'll just say, from a safety concern, I, I, I have difficulty with cars parked along streets, and, you know, I understand that you're trying to solve this problem, so I appreciate that. But what about buses? So I have, you know, I've lived in town for 30 years, so I've seen the increase and growth and all this kind of stuff. I see buses that are idling, which is not allowed. So I'm just to be frank with you, a lot of schools send them somewhere else. I don't, they don't idle, you know, but maybe they're parked in one of the school parking lots behind a dormitory or something like that, and I'd like to see that problem solved. Is that, I mean, they're not your buses, they're, they're your, you know, the...
Well, we have an athletics director, and you can provide direction to anyone that's a visiting team.
Yeah.
So we're absolutely happy to make sure they're not idling, and are you saying not idling and not using the parking area, or just...
Well, currently, they're on the street, so actually, there was another question I have, is would they be using the parking lot? Would they be sitting in the parking lot waiting, or would they be going somewhere and somebody calls them when it's time to pick up the kids?
Right, so that's why we're talking about the day-student lot, which is just north of this in the St. Mark's property.
That would be for the buses?
Right, and we do have another spot for the buses, which is the athletics. We have three, the athletics parking lot, which is on the other side of the hockey rink there. So that's also a space, and I think we added 26 parking spaces as part of the new dormitory project, and that, that's added a lot of space to our main parking lot. So between those three, most of the day-student lot, which is closest from a proximity standpoint, those would be solutions that we're working on, we would push for the buses to, to be there, because it doesn't, if the buses are here, there's not gonna be any room for anyone to park.
I think that's mainly my concerns. I mean, I, you know, just to reiterate, I think, you know, I share your feeling about safety down there. Just remember that the park that the town approved, you know, is, one of the visions for it was to have story hour for children, and I think it's, you know, it's in a way a little bit of an unfortunate spot because it's a high-traffic area. Maybe kids won't be using that park on game day, because it tends to be weekends or later in the day, I think, but I would just, you know, look for a solution, I think, in that area is what I'm, I'm hoping for, that is, you know, provides safety for anybody who's using any of your facilities or town facilities, and also, you know, keeps the buses away, to be honest.
Definitely will work on that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. I looked over the plans. I'm kind of along the same lines as, as Mr. Stein and Ms. Houlihan as well. I'd like to see the Fussin O'Neil plans, comments, but I guess I'll just leave it at that for now. I look forward to getting Fussin O'Neil's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I had the same questions on lighting in bus parking. That's good to hear that that's going to be addressed. Thank you for the complete package, and thank you for the 100% native landscaping plan. That made my heart sing. The only, I would add as a, as a note, that what we usually do, that all plants, to conform as specified, substitutions must be approved by town planner, we have, we usually have some type of note on substitutions.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, and then wait to hear from Fussin O'Neil, but I think it looks good. And I think CONCOM continued waiting for Fussin O'Neil also, didn't they?
Yes, if I can just to follow up, I'm trying to take my notes. So a note should be added to the landscape plan about that any substitutions should, should go through the, the planning department?
Or, should be approved by town planner, yeah.
That should be right on the, on the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
And then on the Conservation Commission, yes, we had our first hearing with, with them, similar thing, they want to wait till Fussin O'Neil as, as well. One thing I would like to mention, one of the discussion items that they were talking about was snow storage. And where the snow storage was gonna occur, we talked about how it was gonna be more on the high side of the lot, and then they were, you know, kind of thinking about if, if signs were needed along the grass swale, which is where our stormwater is being funneled to. They were, you know, considering if it was worth having signs, it's like, you know, no snow storage or... snow storage or things like that. So since that meeting, you know, the team has talked, and the school, and the school has no issues with putting signs, so they don't know that yet, but we're going to add signs to our plan that say, no, no dumping of snow along that swale line, so.
Okay. And so where's this snow storage going to be?
It'll be on, basically, the high side and at the ends. So anywhere, anywhere but the, the stone filter strip and the stormwater swale.
Not here.
All other perimeters. So just not, not on that side.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So we're going to add those signs to the plans as well, as part of the next round of revisions.
Very good.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom, if you have a question or comment, if you could raise your hand?
Fifteen attendees, no hands raised.
Okay. So do we just want to continue? I asked, select board?
I move that we adjourn the select board meeting. Those in favor? Opposed, we adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So shall we continue? Mr. Stein?
So the motion would be to continue the public hearing for St. Mark's School parking lot at St. Mark's Street, major site plan, until October the 2nd, 2023, at 7:05 PM.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have one piece of discussion. Karina, what's the approval period on this?
The approval deadline for 25, for St. Mark's parking lot is October 22nd. So if you have a little bit of time.
We're good.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Luttrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiri, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Thank you. See you October 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
So as soon as I get the Fussin' O'Neill comments, I'll get them right to you.
Great.
I'm on them, trying to push them. And then, the faster you turn it around, the quicker I can get it back to them, and we'll get it out to the planning board members, so we can...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. 28 Turnpike Road, change of use on first floor, minor site plan review. Karina, you want to bring us up to date?
Yes. Marnie, my apologies, I thought...
His seats are low.
Yeah, they are. I'll just let you do the presentation, and I'll just answer any civil questions. Okay, here you go.
Hey.
How are you, Kirk? Very well, thanks. Hi, how are you? Good.
Thank, no, I wasn't feeling slighted. I was looking at Colleen, because I wanted to make, I did bring my board in case you needed it, but you're going to do it this way, so that's good. That's the right plan. It's just not coming in very good graphically, I don't know why. Yeah, I think you need to. It's very pixelated. There we go.
Just in case we have an extension. So just to give you a brief overview, this is minor site plan application for 28 Turnpike Road. It's not a public hearing, it's a public meeting, so it's a discussion with the planning board. We received the application complete on August 30th, and it was filed with the town clerk on September 1st. The approval deadline is October 1st, so if there's any lingering questions, we might have to request an extension, but hopefully, we'll see how that goes, to make it to the next meeting, October 2nd. Just giving you a heads up. Let's see here, the submission number one was provided to the planning board. You got to turn off your phone, Peter. And to the town departments. We received comments back, and I'll let you know what they are, right here. The building commissioner reviewed the plan for parking, and I believe you included an email in your packet. That was sufficient. We received email from the economic development community, they had no comments for this application. We also reviewed feedback, we received feedback from the Department of Public Works, and they also had no concern at this point. So we received three comments back. And that brings us to this evening for public meeting for tonight.
Thank you. Karina?
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Okay. For the record, my name is Peter Barberian, attorney with Fletcher Tilton, and with me this evening are Kirk Carter and Price Carter and Peter Beamish, you know. The property, based upon assessors' records, dates back to 1900, presumably originally started as a residence. Some period of time after that, the first floor was converted for commercial space. In 2000, the town authorized the use of the barn, which is connected to the main building, for a showroom. So at the present time, or at least the last, last use out on the property for the first floor was in the interior design studio, and then the barn was the showroom for that. And then the second floor is a residential unit. The Carters had some discussion with the temporary building official from the viewpoint of converting the site for Kirk's law office, and that's what we're proposing. So we're talking about using the, changing based upon the town records, which identifies the first floor presently as retail use, converting that to office use. With the interior reservations, a very minor decrease in the square footage, otherwise there's no changes, except interior changes of the site and a reconfiguration of the parking lot. The parking use, based upon the existing requirements for the retail use of the first floor, requires 8.3 spaces, plus the two parking spaces for the, for the residential unit, for a total of 10.3 spaces. There are only currently, at best, nine parking spaces out there, out there now. We had discussion with Ms. Quinn and the building official from the viewpoint of the parking requirements for the proposed use. Everybody's in agreement that two spaces are required for the residential use, and the building official is in agreement that those spaces can be in tandem. And if you look at that middle plan in there, you see R1 and R2. Those are the two spaces for the residential two-bedroom apartment. The rest of the spaces are associated with the requirements for the office use, which requires 3.5 spaces or four parking spaces. So a total of six parking spaces are required for the use of the site, and that's what we're proposing. So the change in the use actually results in less of a requirement, less of an impact in relation to parking and the non-compliance of the existing use for parking. So with the change, we're in compliance with the required numbers of spaces of the site. You also have a landscaping plan, there's really no landscaping out in front of the site now, and we're proposing, I think it's 27 trees and shrubs to be planted along Turnpike Road as an improvement to the property. So that's kind of the summary of it all. Again, I think we make the property better conforming than what's out there now as to the nature of the use in the parking requirements.
Just to clarify, it's a total of seven spaces, right? Five for the retail and two for the apartment? It's three and a half spaces per thousand. I think you just mixed that up. So just realize there's a total of seven spaces.
Correct.
It's on the plan. I just want to make sure that was clear. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
Hi. Photometrics? I'm looking for that. I see lighting specs, but I don't see a light, like a, any kind of photometric plan.
I won't disagree, Mr. Stein. You've got to look at these fixtures. I was challenged to come up with some details for this. These are fixtures that typically go on a house, and they just don't provide them. So I had to just do this through the analysis of the total lighting that's provided, and gave you a lumens calculation.
Where's that?
That is on the cover sheet to the lighting, and it's sealed, so I...
It looks like, so it's in handwriting? Okay.
Yeah, it's in handwriting, because these fixtures are just not set up for this. You know, typical parking lot, we go to a photometric that will be provided by that manufacturer, and I can put that lighting level on. We just don't have this here, and I, we looked extensively. They even picked some nice fixtures, these are Hinckley's, and they just don't have them. So all I can say is that this is kind of like a house on Route 9, and we...
Yeah, Peter, I mean, the, I don't know. My problem is, it doesn't really show, like, where the, you know, it's nice that you wrote down these numbers, but it doesn't, like, tell me where it goes.
No, no, sir, it is. The physical location is shown on the exhibit.
Right.
Well, it doesn't tell me where the light shines.
It does not tell you where the light shines.
All the lighting fixtures simply replace what's out there now, with the exception of the two at the back door. The lighting that's out there now is, of course, outdated, it's been there for a period of time. This is all now LED and controlled, so that there won't be any spill over beyond the property lines. These just updated lighting, which will result in better lighting condition.
So I was going to say to you that you can physically see the fixtures.
Okay, I'm sorry. We might just want to put that in the order of conditions, that's all.
Okay, yeah, physically, the light fixtures are there, as Peter said, and we're replacing those in kind, with, I think, a more superior fixture aesthetically. And then, and then there are, we did identify where the new locations were, and it was just those two at the door that doesn't exist today. That's part of the renovation project. So I would say to you that there's probably a lot more spill from the office building next door to where my office is than there is from this site.
Well, we'll let you know, when we're doing that plan.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I guess that's it. I mean, we'll see what the rest of the board says. Okay, for now.
Yeah, we want to keep the lighting as low, because you've got the residential use of the property, so we don't want to have excessive lighting in the property.
Ms. Houlihan?
So sadly, I've only two things. One of them is lighting, but the PF1 are floodlights, and our outdoor bylaw doesn't allow floodlights that aren't aimed downward or well-shielded, and I wouldn't say those qualify.
Okay. Again, I'm replacing a floodlight that's there with...
But the outdoor illumination, 174-12.1, we had a bylaw, it approved, it got approved during COVID 2021. So it's relatively new, but it's, the intent is really to help preserve our environment, and floodlights don't, floodlights don't help our environment. So you really need to be able to find downward-facing, clear lighting, and a floodlight would also have significant light trespass. So that's the other issue, why we don't have, it's prohibited by bylaw, it was actually prohibited in our previous bylaw.
Okay, so, so can, can, you go ahead. That's the fixture you provided me with.
Yeah, it's a fixture, we, these are security lights that are motion-sensitive and activated-only. Right now, there are, there are spotlights. These are also below the lumen and all of those requirements, and are not, they're merely there for security, so that someone doesn't break into the house at night, because we're going to be living upstairs from it.
And I totally understand that, it's just prohibited by our bylaw to have that floodlight. So that specific, I think you can get a floodlight, as long as they're aimed downward and it's very well-shielded, you just need to find a different-looking floodlight than what you have in your specs.
What I was going to say is, if it's possible to condition the approval to that, it would be incumbent upon us to provide you with that specification. So I, I think that's the most reasonable way to do this, is we're replacing a light that is out of compliance with one that would be in compliance.
Basically, yeah. And I think you can find them, so I completely appreciate that. I just don't want to allow you to put up something that's not legal in our town.
Is there a distinction between a floodlight and a security light?
So it's, it's really, it says, "Non-shield wall packs, barn lights, and floodlights not aimed downward or shielded," right? So you really have to have a, this is very, like, lightly-shielded, so you just need a better-shielded floodlight that aims downward, and it just doesn't disperse light significantly. So it's really intending to kind of protect our environment, and making sure that our dark skies are at night. And I, I appreciate the light sensitivity, that's great, there's a lot of them available. So it's just this one particular design that I'd ask you to find a new one.
Can you just point out on the plan, the light you're, you're referring to?
Yeah, they're, they're labeled PF1, there's four of them on the plan.
Can you just zoom to the left a little bit? I just want to make sure that we're clear on the same...
You've got to go to the third, you, Colleen. All the way to the left.
Just click over there, there we go.
And then you'll probably have to zoom in.
So these two are on the sign.
Those are shielded.
Those are just for the sign, yeah.
They're labeled PF1, sorry. It says two PF1s.
They're labeled PF1, they're all labeled the same floodlights. So unless you have different floodlights that you've provided for this sign, they're all labeled the same.
Yeah, that's shielded, and it's only, it's only in one place on the whole, just on the sign.
Right, and then the other ones were PF2s.
Yeah, all the others are PF2s.
Marnie, I don't know if you saw that, but the PF1 was, is that, that, that small one?
Yeah.
And the PF2s were the, the...
Yeah, the PF2s I weren't, I wasn't worried about.
Those are the floodlights.
But those are the floods.
Wait.
Those are in the package.
Oh, I, I, right, sorry, that's the PF2 is correct. So it's the P, oh, sorry, that's what I meant to say, the PF2, not the PF1, and the PF2s...
PF2s are definitely not, they're not shielded, so, and they're...
Right.
They're on the corners.
Yep, PF.
PF, yep.
PF and PF.
And in the back.
And here.
So there's four of them, yes.
So there's not an issue with those, Marnie?
Correct. Sorry, it's not the ones on the sign, it's, yes. So, no.
Which are the problems?
No, the ones that we just located on the building, the actual floodlights, these are PF2.
Mm-hmm, these three. Yep. Those are not compliant.
Correct.
So the ones on the sign are acceptable?
Correct.
It's the three on the building?
Yeah, I understood.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'm glad you were tracking with me, sorry, I was using the wrong numbers.
Sure, we can find something that is shielded.
Peter, you know me by now, at this point.
I do, and I apologize, again, this is the fixture that Kirk had provided, and we gave you the math properly, but, and again, there's no photometric available for this fixture.
And there's a reason there's no photometric provided, because they don't necessarily, they disperse light significantly, and they can't actually comply with it. And then, and then the other was just the sign, because I, I had trouble finding the sign specifics, and I know we have, like, requirements around our sign, so I just didn't see.
It's, it's just the existing sign, and we're just retaining it, and I'm not disagreeing about its position. I mean, a lot of signs on Route 9 follow the same pattern, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming site. They're not expanding it, they're not changing it, they're just keeping the dimensions of what's there, there.
Will not be illuminated or anything...
Do you provide the dimensions and all that stuff? I just didn't see it in the...
No, I did not.
Okay.
It's just existing, and I just called it out as existing. It's not on the lot.
I have...
Part of it is not on the lot.
Right.
Just like the sign next door.
Sorry.
Many signs on Route 9 are not. I'm not putting a new one up, we're just maintaining the existing sign.
Be aware, though, I think that if you change the face of the sign, the writing on it, you have to go to the building department, and if it's not compliant, it's a, it's a...
That's, he would have to make that determination, I don't disagree, but for site plan review, I'm just, it's an existing sign, it's there. That's all that I'm saying tonight.
But you're changing it.
I didn't propose...
You're going to change, you're going to change the face.
Replacing the face with a new tenant, that's it.
Different name. Not going to be a different type, we're just replacing existing lights that are...
Just be aware that when you go to the building department and it's a non-compliant sign, it comes back to the planning board... it comes back to the planning board as a discussion item, for them to report back to the zoning board when you, if, if you have to go to the ZBA.
I fully expect the cycle to follow, what you just described, if it does go that direction.
But it would be helpful if you had a, could send us a spec on what it looks like, what you're going to, have you, do you have an idea of what it's going to look like?
Picture of it.
It's about eight feet by four feet.
But you don't have a design for the wording yet or anything?
It's going to be, just be letters added to.
I know Tim Higgins went, because I've been there that long, Tim, you know, Tim put that sign up. And there may have been a sign there before Tim actually had the property, because they...
So I'm sorry, Marnie, I didn't mean to take your time, I just wanted to be clear that that, the process is understood. So if you want a picture of what the proposed sign is, that would be your question to...
I, I think if they're going to follow the, however they want to go, I can certainly drive by and see what the sign looks like. I'll let you defer to how you want to proceed. That's all for me.
Mr. Murray.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Ms. Braschio.
I don't either, thank you.
All right, I do. So is there a previous special permit for more than one use on a lot, or variants for frontage, or...
I did some looking, because again, when Tim, when Tim Higgins was there, when he started attempting interiors, you would think there would have been something.
So...
See it, but there was a residence in there, and there was the business use.
So will this require a special permit from the ZBA? Because then, because existing non-conforming doesn't if it's a one or two-family home.
The residential is existing.
Correct.
So the retailer is going to office, which is an allowed, dis, allowed use. We sat down with the building official, went through the use category, went through the non-compliant building, went through the non-compliant parking dimensions, and the only thing he set forth the requirement is for the, for the site plan approval.
Well, you may, you may want to ask him that. I mean, that's not, this is a ZBA thing, but, I mean, you don't want that to come back and bite you later, that...
It, it's documented, though, that that's what the uses are that are there. There is, there is a residential component on the second floor, and then there is, we could argue either a retail or it was a, it was a consulting business that was there.
So I under, I understand all that, but, so our new bylaw on pre-existing non-conforming says it requires a special permit to extend or change or anything, change of use, unless it's a one or two-family home, and it meets, you know, it's not becoming more non-conforming, or da-da-da-da.
Again, the, the existing residential is cha, is, is staying.
Correct.
We're not enlarging it, we're not increasing the density of everything else. The billing officials' determination is nothing needed for that use, and as to the first-floor office isn't allowed use in that district, so there's no special permit needed for that. Again, the only thing he set forth is the requirement for the site plan approval.
Okay, just saying. So back to lighting, that PF1, the, the color temperature is 4,000 Kelvin, which is more than our bylaw is 22 to 3, 2,200 to 3,000?
But I think the nine, about the nine watt was 2,000, Mimi, so I'm, I'm just, again, you can...
So I, so all I have is this sheet that says specifications.
But I, and, and I put it down as 1,000, because I believe that's...
Well, it says 1,000 lumens.
The nine watt, right, but the color, I, I thought was under, but if it doesn't comply, we will change it. I mean, you, you, you can, if you're inclined to support the project as it's presented this evening, you can put that as a condition, and we must comply.
Yeah, the lighting shall comply with the requirements of the bylaw.
Okay.
Again, Kirk provided me with these, and I didn't debate it.
I thought we had talked, I thought we spoke about this at some point.
Yeah, and that's why I thought...
We replaced them with ones that met the standard, but apparently they're...
We must have missed this one, because I thought it's, I thought it was 3,000. So I know you're looking for a certain color, and you want to be in that lower range.
Did we talk about the signage lights?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there were two different options. One had higher lumens or higher, whatever it is they calculate, than the other, and I was specing the lower one, that was within...
But it's the lumen, but it's, it's the color, so the color, it's at 4,000, and, and they're, they cap it to keep the...
At 3,000.
To keep the...
6,000.
Yeah.
4,000 is under 6,000.
No, 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 2,200 to 3,000, color temperature.
Color.
Okay.
Kelvin, to, because you want to reduce the blue light to be dark sky compliant. And that's, the higher the number, the more blue light there is.
I'm sure this manufacturer has one with, with the lower output, that you just, that's the one you selected, so...
And I couldn't find a color temperature for the PL1 or PL2?
I think, please? Again, I, I would have no problem with you making that a condition. I know this fixture, it's a really nice fixture, so I tend to believe that it probably complies.
Not that I won't take your word, or Peter.
No, 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 make it a condition, no, no, I'm just, no, 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 Pete, it's, it's the Hinckleys.
Oh, that one.
The three Hinckleys, they're all, you know...
Yeah, I mean, those are very, more like house lantern lighting.
They're beautiful, I just don't know what the color temperature is.
Right.
Within that range.
They will do the project right, I promise you that.
Yeah, they only give you the, they only give you the total output, so...
We get a lot of promises, Peter.
So is, you know, is there lighting times, like, when the lights will be on, or... Are they all going to be motion detected?
The office hours?
The security lights, there are, I think, eight sort of sconces that are just on either side of doors, and four different doors.
Okay.
Those are the Hinckley ones. The other ones are existing, are replacing the floodlights or the spotlights.
She wants to know if you're going to put a timer on.
That's where we're, those were the...
Motion-sensitive.
Activated, but they're going to be hardwired, they won't be solar. And then the ones that are on the signs will be, you know, from dawn to dusk, well, I don't know whether, we might have them on a timer, if that's possible, to have them go off at, you know, 8:00 PM or 10:00 PM.
Those we can put timers on, the other ones are motion-sensitive, so...
But the, the lights at your doors aren't going to be motion-sensitive, are they? No, okay, so what, what are you, what are you, what are you, what are you going to have those for hours?
Turn on adjusted, turn off at 8:00 o'clock.
Yeah, I can't imagine having clients come by after 8:00 PM.
Okay.
So, yeah, they'd be on, off by 8:00 PM, unless I've got, you know, it's also going to be a home, a residence, so...
Right, I understand.
People are coming.
Is there a certain hour that you'd like to cap that at?
What, I'm trying to look to see what the bylaw says. I have most of it memorized, but not all of it.
I have to say that, that on Route 9, where we are, there's a lot of light, so...
3:00 in the morning.
Yeah, but...
Both of the entrances to the residential are in the back of the property, so that's the security concern that's going around.
The next thing is landscaping, although it says "straight native species," there's nothing native on any of those. So they're native to Japan, Asia, Eastern Europe.
Put on what you want, Kirk.
I think it's not native on there. I, I pulled it from the plan that you, that we were given as an example by Corina. There's Acer, Acer rubicon, which is maple, standard maple.
Can we bring that back up, Colleen? I just don't, my, my, don't have my version that has the landscape list on it. I just have a small version that doesn't have it. Oh, thank you.
So...
So we've got the red maple, the cypress?
Which is a, which is a cultivar.
Okay. And the shrubs, he, he had cypress, the, we were... Where did you get the list?
It's the place down the street that we just, we just built, we booked there, just, we're never species. No, the auto, right near the 990. We went through their parking lot and looked at trees, and...
And we wanted to buy, and pulled them right out of the car.
Yeah, there's a, there's a tree...
It's a self-recommended list of trees.
And we got them right off of the... And that one came from that, as being an upright...
You mean the public shade tree?
The ace, the Armstrong, okay, so that's okay, but the rest of them weren't on that list. I'm trying to find it.
Well, we only have two trees.
Well, the, the shrubs are, need to be native.
Give us a list, we'll... I went on, I went by Western Nurseries, and what they indicated was appropriate for areas where there'd be salt and for all the various conditions of the property.
Which, what's the, which plant page is that?
If you go up on that screen, it has the identification.
Right, the planting schedule's just below the locust on the left side. So it was Wigelia, there was Arbividae, there was Cypress, and San Cherry, and Willow.
What page is that on?
It's on, there's only one sheet.
Oh, those are the architectials, you want to go to the single sheet, right there.
Probably that single one there, Mimi, the bottom of your package, there you go, and then go to the upper lot.
So the Cypress is Japan. The wine and roses, Wigelia, is Asia, Europe is the San Cherry, Asia is the Willow.
Okay, I hear you loud and clear.
Is there an existing list of native species beyond what, what Western Nursery says, that I can use to follow?
Well, if Western Nurseries told you those are native species, I wouldn't shop there again, because they're not.
Well, I was going through their website, I may, I might have misread what they were identifying. And native, you're talking about if it was here when the Indians were here, then it's native. If it's something that's been planted and is widely used throughout the New England, that's not native.
Correct, yeah, for environmental reasons, where our... Bugs are, are discreet, decreasing, pollinators are decreasing, and that upsets the whole food web. The bird, songbird numbers are reducing, and a lot of it has to do with there's no food source, because there's not native species. Insects are very specific, and they have evolved for millions of years with specific plants. And so if you stick something in for, from Japan, the insects here have nothing to eat.
So we're in agreement, though, the, the two maples are good, but the 25 shrubs would not be, because, because it wasn't one of them that was native. So, so again, I think we can come up with plants that would meet the criteria, and we're identifying where they're going to be located on the site plan, so we, we have a certain density that we're trying to get along Route 9.
Okay.
So, and we, we just want to get a salt-tolerant one, so that if you wanted to make, again, a condition that natives be used, all, the only condition that I would be imposing back is, we just want one that's going to be salt-tolerant. So we'll find one, I'm sure.
Just note, Kirk, we use gobotany.com. There's a website called gobotany.com.
Gobotany.
That you can check your plants there, it's really straightforward, it's a helpful resource. You seem to know a lot about those, so...
Yeah.
But there's, there's no list of specified, you know, there's nothing that says that these 10 or 12 shrubs are native, and, I mean, we drove around and looked at everybody else's.
No, we have that public shade tree guide.
The tree guide was helpful.
The tree guide that has some, but that was put together with the DPW, knowing that the shade trees along the road, some have to be salt-tolerant, and, you know, it's kind of a guideline.
Sure.
Oh, okay, oh, so go ahead.
Yeah. I just wanted to let you know that per our bylaw on the sconces, your wattage says 100 watts, so this is not applicable. If it hits 120 watt or more, or 1,800 lumens, so if you're in researching that, if it's below, then this, the sconces doesn't apply, that we don't need the, that we don't need the specifics for that. We just need it really for the floodlights.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I think the color, the reason why Hinckley doesn't give you the color, because it's going to be the bulb, and they don't tell you what to put in there, but that's why I said, if you make it a condition, we'll just put in a bulb that's going to have that color, you know, between 2,200 and 3,000.
The recommendation is that you stay between the 2,200 and the 3,000.
And you'd want to anyways, Kirk, you're not, you're not going to light the color when it gets out of range.
So, Marnie, just to be clear, the sconces meaning the PF1s on the, the PF1s where the site, the PF2s?
PLs.
PL1.
Oh, the PL1s.
Those are examples.
PL1, 2, and 3, they're...
The wattage does not meet the applicability of the outdoor illumination, because there's a threshold, and I think we had, somehow we had talked about that.
Yeah.
It's either 1,800 lumens or under 120 watts.
Yeah.
And you're suggesting there would be 100 watts, so we would still recommend that you use lower, you know, ambient lighting versus the blue lights, but...
Anyone in the audience? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, I'm speaking as a citizen, 78 Southville Road, because normally the Open Space Preservation Commission will review these landscape plans, but we don't have a meeting till the 25th, so I just wanted to offer some comments as an individual. The Gobotany website, you find the, the tree you want or shrub you want and put it in. There's a map, and just be careful, because the map will come up with green or purple. Purple means it's, you just want it to be green anywhere in New England is the standard they use. If it's purple, it doesn't count as native, that's just a, a non-native plant that's naturalized. So don't get confused that it's showing on the map, there's two colors. And in the, I think you said that the tree was okay, the maple's okay, but not the cultivar. So anything with those names in the, you have that, I was just looking at the list, so like, that has a name. Yeah, the one you had a minute ago. So like Arbividae, there are native Arbividaes, but not cultivars, so...
Because it said Armstrong, that's what you're saying, Freddie, is that the Armstrong would be a cultivar?
It is a cultivar.
Yeah, okay.
Anything with a name.
Got it.
It just needs to be the straight, we call it a straight species without being changed, because often these changes are changes for our benefit, and we don't consider the benefit of the wildlife using them. And, like, we, we have bought pollinator plants that had no nectar, but they had big flowers. So it's, you know, it's just a simple way, no, not that, not that list. No, 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 I was talking about his list, sorry, I don't, I didn't know that. This is our winter sow project, that's...
No, but, no, but that, that, there may be some plants in that list that may be very appropriate. We struggle to just have lawn in the front of our office because of the amount of salt that the state uses, so, believe me, you want something that's going to be salt-tolerant.
So someday, there may be salt-tolerant plant list for the planning board. The Open Space Commission has been asked by the master plan to come up with these lists. Right now, we're just, we do have a recommendation we'll be sending you, but it's not list, because it's like, you can use anything as long as it's native, we're not going to design it for you, just make it native, so... But it might be, from this conversation, wise in the future to have a salt-tolerant list, a wet list. But there's a lot of work to go into that, and maybe we can, that could be a project we do.
I, I have a salt-tolerant list that the Rhode Island Department of Transportation did.
Oh, yeah, yeah, maybe you can share it to them.
I can share. The other thing, Peter, I forgot to mention, there are no sizes, so the trees have to be at least 3-inch caliper.
We put the height and the width of what Kirk had planned, so...
Well, so I need the...
Really have a caliper.
So you're not planting a 60-foot tree?
No, I know, I'm with him, Mimi, I'm with him.
So we need... So we need at least.
I have to say that Kirk sent it. I said, "Thank you." I put it on the plan and I was happy to move on to the next topic. So I apologize for that.
And so three-inch caliper.
Agreed.
Trees and.
Eight feet, 100, minimum, or six feet to start?
Well, I think we require by width. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And.
Be able to grow, just like one of the challenges was finding shrubs that would be at least three feet and that you could, you know, that you could purchase locally.
Yeah. So they need to be three feet when they go in the ground. Yeah. But it doesn't.
Back to the trees just for a moment. Because the reason we went with the cultivars, we've got, although we've got, I think, 87 feet of frontage, we've only got about 40 feet of it that's growable or where you could plant two trees. And so I was looking for, and I've seen these cultivars, it's a maple that basically grows crazy, straight like a pyramid.
So that's fine, I'm okay with that. I don't, I think the rest. Right, yeah. Okay. And it's part of our street tree guidelines for that reason because it grows narrow. So in specific circumstances, I think that's fine. I'm fine with that. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
It just seems like we have a lot of conditions. I don't know. At what point do we want to just have another go at this? I know it's sort of a broad question, but it just, it seems like there's just a lot of loose ends on this one. Karina, what are you thinking?
So just to recap, we have a condition for the lighting that is on the, the floodlights on the sign that indicates that they must comply with outdoor illumination by law as far as shielding.
No, no, no. PF1 is color. PF2 is shielding.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But you're right, you're on the right track. PF1, you can just say it like that. PF1, we have a color issue and we're going to keep it between 2,200 and 3,000.
Yeah.
PF2 was shielding, which I think we can do. We'll just pick a different fixture, probably from the same manufacturer, but with shield.
Yes. And then the landscaping, except for the trees, will be, except for the two trees proposed, will be native species. And they'll be required to submit a planting schedule showing the height proposed that identifies the corrected species and the dimensions to the planning department for approval. And then I think, I think that was it. Those were the two conditions.
Pretty straightforward.
Jesse, did you follow me?
We had lighting?
We had the lighting, two types of the lighting. One had to be shielded and the other had to have the correct correlated color temperature.
And what about the sign?
The sign is under the building department jurisdiction. If they change that sign, they have to go to the building department. And if it triggers a ZBA special permit, it would trigger them to come to planning board for a report back to the ZBA. But the sign, as far as it is right now, is existing. But if they do change it, they have to go to the building department for a building permit. And if they don't comply, they would need a ZBA special permit.
Fine with that condition. We came into this knowing.
Yeah, they're not moving the sign, it's the same sign. It's just that they'll change the wording. And if, like I said, if they do that, they do have to go to the building department. And then the landscaping was the other condition. That except for the two trees proposed that need to be more salt tolerant and they're in our tree guideline on the list there, the other proposed landscaping has to be straight native species to the right size. And the trees have to be three-inch caliper. So in the tree planting table that they're going to submit to prove this in writing to us, it will have to show that those are compliant.
Thanks, Karina. Okay. I'm good.
Are you okay, Jesse?
Yeah.
Is everyone else comfortable with conditioning? Okay. Lisa? Yeah?
Shall I?
You shall.
Motion is to approve minor site plan for 28 Turnpike Road with conditions.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We just went through the conditions.
As discussed.
As discussed. Seeing none. Did we already ask for comment? Yes, we did. Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiri, yes?
Rashaer, yes.
And there were no waivers.
Thank you.
There were no waivers. I don't believe there were any waiver requests. Okay, all right. So good. Congratulations.
Good luck. Welcome to Southboro. Oh, you were in Southboro before?
We were here for nine years, yeah.
Oh, wow.
I was on the assessment board.
From 92, 99.
Lots of committee vacancies.
Look on the website.
Take that under advice. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, Mimi, I'm going to leave at this time.
Oh, okay, you're past your hard stop. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you. Bye-bye.
Can we take a two-minute recess, Mr. Stein?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiri, yes?
So I didn't know if this board felt that that was something that we should ask from the select board? If they felt that this was something that the planning board should weigh in on? So that, that's why I put this on the agenda. Mr. Stein?
So I didn't have a chance to review the select board meeting. Are they intending to build residential housing there? Or I guess I just need a little more info. Surely not just tear, tear the building down and leave it empty lot.
They intend to put up, put out an RFP for a feasibility study. But it appeared the consensus of the board was not to preserve that building.
But, okay, so, but the first step would be the RFP for feasibility? It sounds like. Okay. So I'm not necessarily opposed to that step. And I think that that was, that's in line sort of with what the subcommittee's report, you know, laid out as the logical possible paths in terms of our evaluation of the site and what could be done with it. A feasibility study is clearly the first step. If the select board's intention is to proceed with a teardown regardless of the findings of the feasibility study, that's something that I think we should have a joint meeting on and come to an agreement on, you know, what the thinking is. You know, why would that be the necessary course of action? How is it beneficial to the town? In the context of my subcommittee's report.
Ms. Houlihan?
Thanks. My perspective is that in a, in a well-written request for a proposal, they would provide what the options are that they'd like to see. Since they've made a vote that they'd like to demolish the building, in my understanding, or at least simplistic view, they would not include preserving the building as part of that RFP. So my question then would be, not my question, but I think I would advise the planning board, do submit a recommendation. Because I, I think in the, what Tom, I can never pronounce his last name. Thank you.
Physical.
Yes, of that committee shared is you could do some things. You could preserve the building, you could preserve different things, or you could take it down. So if the, and since we don't know, because there was no intention clarified on what the intent would be inclusive of the proposal, I think we meet, or we request to have that report to be able to provide that perspective. Because absent that, I would assume they would not include preserving the building as part of that RFP.
Ms. Demiri?
Yeah, I agree with Marnie. I'm a little confused about the RFP, but I think there is an, if there's an opportunity, I'm not 100% sure if the planning board can offer our opinion. We have to request the select board whether they would like our opinion or can we just? Yeah, how does that work? If you can just, I mean, I think that's the route to go. We all have read the report. We all, I think we all attended the, you know, meeting on 21 Highland. And I think I'd like to put forward, you know, planning board's position to the select board. Can you read that section of the bylaw again to me? I'm not familiar with it.
Any city or town having a planning board established under Section 81A, which we do, may by ordinance, bylaw, or vote provide for reference of any matter or class of matters to the planning board before action thereon with or without provision that final action shall not be taken without planning board, shall not be taken until the planning board has submitted its report or has had reasonable fixed time to submit such a report. Such planning board shall have full power to make such investigations, maps, reports, and recommendations in connection there and relating to any of the subjects referenced. to it under this section as it deems desirable."
Ah, okay. I recognize that part, Mass. General Law. I mean, and the other thing is that this, you know, we're just about to kick off our MBTA community forums, that's a property that could fall within the scope, we'd like to hear from, you know, the public. We sent mailings specifically around the folks that are living in that area, so hopefully we'll get a higher concentration of neighbors coming from there, and it'd be good to hear their view of what they think. They're looking at that building also. But I, I, so I kind of think it's too premature for the Select Board, but I'm not on the Select Board, but I think that we should take this opportunity to write our position.
Ms. Brascio? Oh, she left, never mind.
Right.
Yeah. So, just to clarify, the Select Board didn't vote, it was a discussion item, so they, but it appeared clear from the consensus that there was no appetite to preserve the building. In the, the neighbors in that, that neighborhood did send a petition to the Select Board, there were 60-something, maybe 100 signatures on that, that they would like to see that building preserved. And there was someone from that neighborhood who spoke and said, you know, their kids sled down that hill, the whole, the whole neighborhood uses it for sledding, and it's a gorgeous building, and, you know, the, the issue with the Select Board was that it's expensive to maintain, and it will be expensive to update the heating and cooling systems. And this particular neighbor's opinion was, I don't care, it's my tax money, it's a beautiful building.
Amy, did you say that that is on the National Registry?
Yes.
So, there is, your Code of Federal Regulations 36, 60 dash, I'm sorry, 60.15, removing properties from the National Register. Any person or organization may petition in writing for the removal. So, this won't be an easy task to start. There's a process to do it. And then, you have, I think, believe you have to take it off before you can take it down.
Yeah. Oh, and I also wanted to, to mention that the, the CHOPC and Capital Planning Subcommittee that Mr. Stein was on, they had the President from, from the Mass. Builders and Remodelers Association take a look at that building, and he took an architect through it, I think that was December 19, 2021 meeting, and he was very enthusiastic about preserving that building. And he said, "It's a gorgeous building, I used to live in Florida, they don't have any historic buildings there, you really appreciate the historic nature of this area when you live someplace else, and it's a gorgeous building, it could make beautiful condos." And the architect was also very excited about it, he said, "If, you know, if you ever want to convert this, please send me, you know, the request to bid, and he would love to bid on it." So, you know, I don't know much about historic rehabilitation, I just think it's a gorgeous building. But those are people that I think have a lot of experience in that area, and they thought that it was worth preserving. Anyone in the audience? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road, and I'm speaking as a citizen, although I am the Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and we will be taking this up at our next meeting, we've already discussed it but not taken a vote. But as a citizen, I want to tell you my experience, and why I hope you do move forward with this, because I'll tell you two words you have not heard during the discussion of the disposal or destination for this property: open space. And from when they first set up a committee, I said, "You need to have," I told the Select Board at the time, "When you're talking about, you know, what to do with a property like this, you need to have all the players at the table: the Open Space Commission, the Historical Commission, Affordable Housing, any other group that thought they should be included, but never." And we never get included in any of the conversations or notices of any of the information. We will be submitting our, our comments, but I'll tell you my perspective. That is a historic landscape, the whole property. The building's historical value is diminished to almost zero if you don't save the whole landscape, with a view from Southville Road during the winter when you can see through the trees, and from the street. The land is a valuable piece of open space. You heard the neighbors talk about sledding, I wasn't even aware of that. The land in front of that property below the stairs is a park, and is used as a park. And we're talking about increasing the density in an already dense neighborhood, the value of that open space is bigger than the size of the land. You could have a parcel 10 times that size hidden away out in back, you know, where you don't see it, that would have not the same value to that neighborhood as that area that gives you a sense of openness, and you get to see the historic landscape. So, you know, personally, I'm for no net change in the layout of land, no, no building expansion, you've got the, in front, and then you've got the playground. And now people are starting to say, "Oh, well, we'll save the playground." That's very important, but the land out front and that park is huge. And it's not just for how many people sit there and use it, it's for how much value it has for that neighborhood, just to see it, just to be able to walk down the street and not be surrounded. And it's already the densest, I already said this, but it's the dense, one of the densest neighborhoods we have, and we're talking about increasing the density there. That neighborhood deserves to have some green space in their neighborhood. So, you know, I'm hoping this, at least through the Planning Board, if nowhere else, that the Open Space Commission will be able to weigh in once we discuss this and take a position. Thank you.
Hi, Kristin.
You're still muted, Kristin. Can you unmute her, or does she have to?
Yep, there we go. Sorry about that. I will keep this very brief. I'm speaking as a citizen, 12 Southwood Drive, but I am also a member of the Southborough Recreation Commission and CPC. First, I just want to echo everything Ms. Gillespie said. I couldn't agree more. I am a resident of the South Side, and the thought of, of losing that property as, you know, a, a, really, one of few points that we have on the South Side, that is both historical and open, and a place where our kids can go to meet when schools aren't in session, very important. I, I already elaborated this, on this, on the Select Board meeting, so I won't make you guys listen to that again. The one request I do have, though, and Ms. Latrell, like, I understand when you were giving kind of the summary of the, the Select Board's position, that the comment about the thought that this is a huge money investment and/or a money pit, we've heard our Select Board refer to it, I would, I hope people will stop using that, or, and I don't mean to say you're spreading it, you're, you're just reiterating the facts that they're putting out there. I'm not sure those are, are correct facts, so I think we need to kind of stop saying that, and then just wait until the actual figures come out, because again, we have Committees and Commissions who've received, who have a much different perception, I guess. And so therefore, I just think it hurts the conversation, and again, it's not a criticism of anyone on tonight, to keep putting that out there. I think we just, honestly, Committees, Commissions, and Community have to push for the actual figures so people can make their own determination. That's all I had to say for today.
Thank you. Anyone else?
11 attendees, no hands raised.
Anyone in the audience? So, does, is it the consensus of the Board that under Chapter, Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81L, we ask that this be, subject be referred to the Planning Board for a report from the Planning Board before any final action is taken?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Should we vote on that?
Some moved.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demaria, yes.
Next item on the agenda, it's a discussion item, Stone Brook Village, is this just being continued?
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Unless I'm needed, I'm going to jump off.
Jesse, you're always needed.
Well, specifically on Stone Brook, I don't, if, we're not, this is not going to be deliberated on at all, right, Karina, so that--
No, I'm just going to give us a very brief update.
Our Chair doesn't have to recuse herself? Okay, in that case, apologies to the Board, I'm going to exit at this point, but thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks.
Should I recuse myself if there's any discussion on this?
It's just an administrative update.
Okay.
All right, so, just briefly, I have this on the agenda because Stone Brook Village subdivision, the developer is seeking as-built review and bond reduction, and they had provided as-built, and Fasenonio provided a, a bond reduction review, and that information was passed on to the developer. There were some items that they had to revise in the as-built and address and respond to those comments, and they provided me with a PDF, but not a complete revised submittal. So, they need time to do that, so that we can get a follow-up review from Fasenonio before presenting it to the Board, so the Board can make a, a decision on the bond reduction, and accepting the as-bills, if they're in proper order. So, they're working on that, so, that's all I have on that.
Next item on the agenda, St. Mark's Stonewall and Tree Mitigation at St. Mark's Park. Do we have anything new on this?
Let me check. Just show-- So, at the last meeting, it had requested that if the park plans are updated based on feedback from the Town Administrator and the DPW Director, who's indicated that they were tweaking, they were revisiting the plans in order to see if there was any cost savings, because the bid had come in more than expected. So, I reached out to Mark Purple and asked him, through an email, that if the plant, when the plans are updated, that Planning Board would like to get a copy of the new set, so that they can continue their discussion and review of them, in an informal basis.
Ms. Houlihan?
So, is there any update at all?
Sorry, not yet.
Okay. So, it's been about a month, and they still have no, they have nothing?
Well, our meeting was on the 28th of August, was it, the 24th or the 28th?
Oh, yeah.
Last meeting, so, it's on the, it was August 28th, so, there's been a Labor Day in between.
Right.
Not to make excuses, but just so that we get the right picture.
So, there is a stone wall that's being built, and that was, I believe, the wall, oh my gosh, I've forgotten the dates, but I think that might have been the plan that Mr. Dennington mentioned, that, where he approached the Planning Board and said, "No, we, we always intended to move this wall," and it was, it predated the conversation that we had, where Select Board said that they would, agreed to 100 feet of wall. So, I don't know how that plays into anything, but I think that was part of the original plan that he mentioned, and it looks like it's just being built, I guess. But it's not 100 feet? No. And I don't think that counts towards the 100 feet. I mean, I think that, you know, a, a plan that goes back in time like that, where they say, "We're gonna, we're gonna do this work," or whatever, that, that's fine, but when we had our, just to reiterate, when we had our joint hearing, scenic wall, and the agreement was for 100 feet, I don't think you can go back in time and say, "Oh, we're gonna just include that prior number of feet into the agreed-upon." So, but anyway, it's being built, so I'm interested to hear what the Select Board does. I hope that they honor their, it's really a promise, when we get together for a, a hearing, that was the decision, that there should be 100 feet. No, I don't know where it would go, I think that it was never decided, and we've not seen a plan, right?
Well, at the, at that meeting on May 2nd--
May 2nd.
--it was communicated to us that it was going to be in the park, but that was not true, there are, there are no stone walls in the park. And I'm wondering, I saw this, that wall today, I hope it's going to get taller, you can't even see it behind the sidewalk. So, my question for the, for the remaining Board members, I'm wondering if we should ask that to be referred to us to officially make a, a report, under the same section of Mass. General Law?
In lieu of the fact that they've decided we don't need to do major site plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion for the Planning Board to create a report under MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81, report to the Select Board regarding the plans for tree mitigation and stonewall mitigation, relative to the new park plans.
I second.
Motion as second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demaria, yes.
The next item on the agenda is 120, discussion item, 120 Turnpike Road and 250-- can we take this discussion together, the two?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
120 Turnpike Road and 250 Turnpike Road, the proposed 40Bs.
So, just really quickly, the update. At the last Planning Board meeting, Planning Board had asked me to forward the information on both of these projects to the Public Safety officials, and I received feedback from the Fire Department with kind of a memo that they usually give us for site plan review. So, we have that available. It's kind of their standard requirements for projects. So, they provided us a, a site plan review memo, so to speak, for both 120 and 250. Things like access, you know, turning, the weight ratings for drainage, culverts, and septic components, any access gates must be accessible by the security knockbox, Knox Box, building numbering, Fire Department sprinkler connections, things like that, fire hydrants, fire lanes, water supply within adequate distance and such, so standard items. So, at least they saw this now, they had not seen it prior to this, so they appreciated, I think, seeing it. I didn't hear anything back from the Police Department, but the Fire Department, probably a little bit more critical in a, in a site design type of aspect.
Karina, can I just ask, when they send that to you, do they also send it to ZBA? So, they have that for their files?
No, since I requested it--
Okay.
--they sent it back to us, but we could forward it.
I think it would just be a good collegial thing to do. I think it would just be a good collegial thing to do in the interest that they'll probably get approved and file.
Okay. Send.
Do you want to speak to legal? Or do you want me to?
Oh, you can.
So with, with both of these projects, as you know, there's, well, with 120, there's the site that they want to put the 40B on, doesn't have frontage and it can't be A and R, it needs to be subdivided, which according to Town Council can be done through the ZBA. But I have questions. So it would be a, the subdivision, I assume, would be two sites, one of which is under Chapter 40B, one isn't. So our local regulations would be waived for one lot, but not for the other. And I don't know how that works, if the ZBA would ensure that our local regulations were followed for one of the lots or if, so it was confusing to me. What I, in my, I'm not a lawyer mind, thought would, that would be easiest would be for the Planning Board to do the subdivision approval and then the ZBA could waive any of the local regulations on that 40B lot. But I don't, so I don't know. And then there's the special permits that they have to come back and, and have those. So there's a lot of like legal things up in the air. And we did get some answers from Town Council, but I would feel better if we had a meeting with ZBA, Planning Board, and Town Council to kind of lay the path forward so we all know what's going on and what needs to be done and what our responsibilities are in agreement.
Would that be in a letter format or simply an email request? Do you think, what do you think the best approach would be? Draft a letter or just, you know, request through Town Administrator, because Town Council's involved, that a, a meeting be set up? And again, it was ZBA, Planning Board, and Town Council.
Yeah.
For permitting process, path, and responsibilities.
Yeah.
I can start with an email, see if we get a response?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And include the ZBA chair, so.
Yes.
We're not dragging them into something that, that, I don't know if we, my hesitation is I don't know if we should reach out to ZBA first and get them on board and then the both of us ask? Or?
I could do that because I spoke with David Williams today about some of the zoning amendments that they were looking to talk about. So I can follow up with him and say, do you think this is a good idea? Would you be on board? And then?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Is there any further comment? Yes, ma'am.
Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road. I'm speaking first as a Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission because we did review the 120 Turnpike Road 40B mass housing project and sent a comment letter in. So I'm curious about the, to report back to the committee about, we mentioned the legal restraints in it. And so is this, did you hear back that we can, so from now on, we can just undo any old special permit and variance? They don't have to withhold up, they don't have to live up to what everyone agreed to when they were permitted and then the, in the, in the future, you can just say, oh, we didn't mean that and it's, it's not, doesn't mean anything?
That would be a good question for our joint meeting.
And second, for the subdivision issue, you have a large property, only a portion of it is going to be the 40B, which is exempt. When you subdivide, there's an open space requirement. And will that come into play? You can't, can you, can you just say, oops, that doesn't, we don't have to do that either?
Yeah, that's one of the questions, that one parcel will be under the comprehensive permit and one won't, so one should be compliant with town regulations and the other one, they can be waived.
Well, I, I heard you say that and I understand after they're subdivided, that one has to comply and one doesn't with zoning. But when you're in the process of subdividing, that creates a 10% of the entire.
Correct.
Lot. And it's not to one lot or the other, it's to the whole parcel, which is not a 40B parcel. The whole parcel is not. You are creating a 40B and they're saying, once it's created, now you have a lot that doesn't have to comply. But you can't say the whole lot doesn't have to comply or, I mean, I don't know. The question is, how would you say that?
I, that's.
Or do we just get to waive all our zoning bylaws because they're going to put a 40B on a portion of it?
I think, one of the things Town Council, if I'm not mistaken, said that part of the process would be that the original site plan component would have to come back for modification for their permits that were provided previously. And not that that answers the whole question, but.
But there was a variance on that. But nobody knows what parts the variance and what parts the site plan, right? Special permit? Are we undoing the variance as well?
Just remind me, what was the variance for?
Frontage and side setback.
The variance makes the lot legal, so that stays with the land.
The variance makes the lot legal, so it stays with the land, Colleen said. So again, like Mimi said, questions, right?
The condition of the not putting more than two buildings on the lot, I, my understanding is no one seems to know if that's part of the condition for the variance or for the special permit. And I think it would be a meaningful question to know so that the citizens of this town who go for a hearing on a variance, if they come up with a, you know, agreement and everyone's satisfied that down the road, that variance can be undone. And, or does it just comply, apply to this, this special permit? Or does all of these legal recorded documents open for in the future saying, well, that doesn't, we can undo them? Is everything undoable? And I think that was the question. Also with, and the bigger one is, the whole property is not 40B. And when they subdivide it, a portion becomes 40B. But the 10% is of the whole parcel that needs to be open space by your zoning code, by our zoning code. And you shouldn't be able to waive that because it's going to be a 40B in the future.
And just in reading a brief part of the response from Town Council, they will have to seek approval from the Planning Board for changes to the existing permits slash approvals for the current office uses.
Is, is that a public document that the Open Space Commission could get a copy of somehow? Which document? She's reading from the Town Council's emails.
It's an email from Town Council. It says exactly that. It's one sentence, just as, because we were trying to figure out, you know, the order of the permitting, too. And that's why, you know, Mimi had suggested to have this combined meeting to determine really what has to happen. And part of that is that what happens to the existing site, the leftover remaining site and its legality in, as a site.
And I'm, I, I hear that, but I'm also asking what happens to it before it becomes the leftover site because it's a whole site you're subdividing. And that is not a 40B subdivision.
Correct. That's the question.
No, the subdivision should go through prior to any sort of a, you have to create the lot for the 40B and then it stands on its own. During, during the time you're creating it is when you should get your 10%.
In an answer to the variance special permit, the, the way the decision was written, they're both together in one.
So we're undoing both a variance and a special permit legally?
Um, yeah. The condition wouldn't, so one of the conditions for both of these things is being, what's my word? They're not going to be in compliance for both with the third building.
So my point is somehow we should alert everyone that when they get a variance or a special permit through the ZBA, if they come to an agreement and get this legally, what the conditions are, those conditions don't mean much more than the paper they're written on?
Well, that's, yeah, that's the question. And it's the same with 250 because there were several special permits there, too, that restricted that residential portion of the lot.
Okay. Just surprising that legal documents don't mean the legal restrictions that are in place when they're written. Okay, so, and you're, so you're already aware of the open space for the whole parcel? And the open space would be difficult to make because you're not, can't put it on the 40B parcel, then that's waived? So you'd have to find a place in the parking lot for a park? Because you can have a park, it doesn't have to be natural. So we'd have to find a way, we'd be looking at trying to find a way to create a park in the middle of the parking lot, I would imagine. Okay. Thank you.
Kristin, do you have your hand up for this issue?
Yeah, I do, just very quickly. First of all, that whole, that whole last, I raised my question, my hand only for a question, but that whole last portion of the topic was very interesting. So I guess first, the question is a citizen, 12 Southwood Drive. So these waiving of the variances, is that something that can just happen outside of town meeting?
Yeah.
If I was understanding Ms. Gillespie correctly, you know, I was learning a lot there. But it sounds like there was certain expectations put in place, but those could be waived and without town meeting?
That's not something that requires town meeting approval, but that's part of the, the questions that the Planning Board had. There's so many legal issues from previous permits that we don't know how to, how all of this fits in, which is why we'd like to talk to Council.
No, that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that. Honestly, the only reason I raised my hand previously was that there was mention of maybe some questions to work out with CPA as well. And admittedly, I may not have been paying, I, I was just wondering if we could recap, if I'd heard that correctly, the questions that you have for CPA regarding this property? Or did I hear incorrectly?
I, I may have not enunciated, ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's what caught my attention. I'm like, wait a second, what? All right. Good, that's it. That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this? I think we're good.
Just really quickly, I want to point out that the, our Planning Board's comments for the 40B to mass housing were delivered and they received them. And then also note that neighborhood, Attorney John St. Andre for the neighborhood at 250 also submitted comments that were accepted by mass housing. Tim, did you submit something to for the 40Bs? No, that was a different topic. Okay, that was something else. Okay. Thanks.
Do you have a record of the Open Spaces Commission's comments being accepted?
Oh, we wouldn't.
No, I saw they were submitted.
I was just wondering why you're saying.
You can reach out to Kat Miller at Mass Housing and she's very responsive. If you ask her if they got them, she'll say they, they received, I'm pretty sure. I don't want to speak for her, but they respond very quickly if you just do a follow-up. If you need that email, I, we can give it to you tomorrow.
The next item on the agenda, public shade tree policy and proposed Select Board updates. I put this item on the agenda because Karina received an e-alert last week saying the Select Board would be reviewing the tree policy to make changes. And then I learned that Sam brought it up on the Select Board meeting on 9/5. And he said he discovered there was a conflict with the code. Perhaps we can have him speak to that. But it's a little disheartening that we, we worked on this for four years and there was some issue that was discovered and it didn't reach out to the Planning Board who had been working on this for four years with. Additionally, more than half the streets in Southborough are scenic roads, which are under the Planning Board jurisdiction. So one would think that you would want a policy that both the Planning Board and the Select Board are in agreement with. Or you'll get into a crazy situation that at consolidated hearings that the, you know, Planning Board will go by some policy we create and you'll go by some policy you create and we'll never approve anything. And then we'll get nowhere. And I thought we had been working very collaboratively. I thought that the joint meetings had gone well and this is just a little disconcerting. I don't know if you want to speak to.
Sam Stivers, member of the Select Board. I'm happy to speak to the point. I don't think it has to do with the policy per se in the sense that, and it is, I guess, to me, an issue of consistency with time, but town bylaws. And I was alerted to this as I listened to your meeting last month where you were talking about the native plants requirements. And that caused me to go back and look at our tree policy that we approved back in May against the bylaws. And if you look at the bylaws in Chapter 140, or 174, the zoning bylaw, and I think it's 153, the tree bylaw, the language in those, both of those places actually does not require the use of native species. It says recommended and a goal and other words, that is a flexible word there. And as I looked at the Select Board tree policy, it requires native species. And it struck me that Select Board can't actually rewrite bylaws without going to town meeting. And so there's an inconsistency there between the Select Board's policy and what's required in the town bylaw. And it seems to me it's, it's actually useful to make clear for applicants and everybody dealing with these things of whether it's required or not. And technically, at least my view is, that in the bylaw, it's not required for native species. And I think it's useful to clarify that. So, and in fact, there's a simple way to do that. If, if the will of the town is to make native species required, one can go in and do an update to the town bylaws and make that happen. So that's, again, where that comment came from, when I listened to your comments last month and figured out that, oops, there is an inconsistency there. So that's what I'm trying to resolve. Simple as that.
And what was this conversation last month?
When you were talking about native, native plants, native trees last month, and I think, Ms. Lotrell, you were the one who had actually cited the sections of the town bylaw and you said, and the, and the Select Board's tree policy also requires that. And that rang a bell for me and I didn't recall that, but I went back and looked and you're right, it does require it. And that's where I saw the conflict. And at, at least in my mind, this has nothing to do with the overall tree policy and scenic roads and stone walls and whatever. It's simply trying to be consistent between the town bylaws and the Select Board's policy. So that. So that, in a nutshell, is, is what prompted my proposal.
So I respectfully disagree with you.
I understand. And again, I'm happy, prepared to talk about that select board meeting tomorrow night.
The, the town public shade tree, the town shade tree law, bylaw that we just passed, says that the tree warden shall determine the type, size of tree with the goal to have a native shade tree planted in a location at the discretion of the tree warden. So it's not a goal, it's a goal that native trees are planted, it's not a goal that the trees planted are native. So to, to disavow this is to disavow the planting of trees, which is required, or is the goal of this bylaw, is to disavow the goal that was approved by the legislative body. Additionally, 174-13, 74-13, although this has nothing to do with, the tree policy has nothing to do with zoning.
Correct. It's a different part of the bylaw, yep.
Yeah. But, just so everything is consistent and harmonious, the site plan is always a negotiation. And if you put, if you change the landscape bylaw to, to require natives, there would be no grass, and I think that would be difficult to take. So it's a, it's a give and take. We, not everything is native, but some things that are very important to the environment The purpose of the landscaping is to preserve and protect the community's ecological resources, and that native planting does that. It requires that trees be of a species common in the area. I would say that's native is common in the area. It also mentions, under water supply, the recommendation for native plants. And then the piece that you pulled out that encourages the use of negative, native plants. Also, the, our lid bylaw, which is, we usually, during major site plan, a lot of times, we also have a special permit for lid, that requires native plants. And as you know, zoning provisions can't be viewed in isolation. You need to look at the entire statute so it's interpreted to be consistent and harmonious. So native plantings are required and are consistent and harmonious with our master plan, our hazardous mitigation plan, the street tree guidelines, and the downtown district guidelines. So I would say that having native plants to just strike it from the policy is inconsistent with our code.
I'm certainly not proposing striking it. And in fact...
It's stricken.
Well, not in what I'm proposing. So...
Do you have a new proposal?
It's the one in the packet. One of the packet for select board meeting.
Oh. So, yeah, that's very confusing, and you think that's more easy for people to follow?
Well, I, yes, I do, actually. And it seems to me your point about flexibility is a good one. You do need flexibility, and again, I think the zoning bylaw language does provide some flexibility, which I think is reasonable. So, again, consistency is what I'm trying to do here. And I understand the, the goal and the encouragement, and I'm in favor of directionally moving toward native plants. On the other hand, I think that the town bylaws, the town legislature, did not say shall or require, and I think that's what we need to keep in mind here. So again, we can always go back to the town, town meeting and change that language. If that's the will of the town, that's what we need to do. But that was not the proposal, or that was not what was approved by town meeting, at least in my view. So, and I understand you have a different view, and I respectfully disagree with that.
So you're saying that provided for such replacement of trees, the tree warden designee shall keep in mind that the town bylaw 154-4, public shade tree, and 173-13 landscaping specify in the form of case a goal of having native trees, and in later case encouraging the use of native species. By recognizing that neither of these sections of the bylaw specifically require the use of native species and therefore provide reasonable discretion for the tree warden designee relative the replacement species decision. That's clarity?
That's clear to me.
I have other, so the, my main issue is striking of native species, and I think that is inconsistent with the bylaw, inconsistent with everything this town has been doing to try and provoke, promote a better environment and protect the community's ecological resources. There are, what is the reason to not put in native trees? Most of the street trees now are native.
There is no reason not to. The reason, the issue here simply is that I'm not striking anything in the bylaws, striking nothing. I'm simply changing the select board's policy to be consistent with the bylaw. So this gives the tree warden designee, for example, full discretion to use native, native plants any place that they seem, they deem appropriate. Hopefully, that will be, you know, most if not all places. But I think that that, again, is consistent with the bylaw as it's written today.
Well, that, so that doesn't encourage or show a preference either?
What doesn't? The by, the bylaw doesn't?
No, what you, what this, your addition.
It says he shall keep that in mind.
Right.
Which, which again, to me, if I were reading it as, as the tree warden designee, that would mean I should try to support what those bylaw requirements, or bylaw, the bylaw language encourages or sets as a goal.
So I, I disagree, I find that confusing, and I'd rather have something that, you know, recommends native species unless there's a specific reason to not.
And again, I'm certainly open to discuss that at tomorrow evening's meeting.
Does anyone else have any comment on native species? I have other issues, too, with the changes, but that's the big one.
Not specific to native species, but just a general Gestalt comment, but I can wait until you get through your other pieces.
Debbie? Anything specific to native, then I'll go through my others. So a lot of it's wordsmithing, and I'm fine with that.
And again, definitions and inconsistencies in some places, just, it was not as carefully reviewed as it should have been. I'm, I'm one of the guilty parties in that, I should have read it more carefully when I voted for it in May.
Although the, the capitalization of public shade trees, that's not a proper name, and it's not capitalized in Mass general law.
And again, I'm trying to be consistent in terms of the policy. So, you know, if it should be lowercase, that's fine.
What else? And while we're wordsmithing, I see that you picked up on, under 2A, the tree warden designee evaluates trees, blah, 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 and adds his notes, you put his, her. If we're wordsmithing, we might as well put there. Then you added under public shade tree removal hearings, 3A, in, relative to the application that, in the select board, in the planning board, as applicable, shall review such applications and file the application deemed complete with the town clerk. So that says that you would have to have, like, the planning board would have to have a meeting in order to review the application, the select board. The way we do it now, town planner reviews.
Okay, I was trying to distinguish there, I think, between the scenic roads and non-scenic roads.
Yeah.
Different process there. So, you know, if town planner should review, that's fine.
Under tree notices shall not be nailed or affixed to a tree in any manner that will cause significant, you added significant?
Yep.
So that's a loophole word. That's a word that you can't define in who decides. And it's inconsistent with Mass general law that says that you can't injure a public shade tree. It doesn't say significantly.
I'm open to other suggestions for that.
Just don't injure the tree. It's, so, according to the arborist, if you staple on notices in the bark and it doesn't go through, it doesn't injure the tree, that's fine.
Glue it on or something.
No, you can staple, so the bark is what protects the tree, and it won't injure the tree.
Which is what I was trying to get, was significant, but, you know, you're right, that is subjective.
I would just remove it. Oh, and then under tree replacement, on A, that, that first statement is a policy statement, at least one, you remove native species. Trees shall be planted for each public shade tree that was removed in accordance with the public hearing process laid out, and you added at the applicant's expense?
Right. I thought, in this section, I thought we were talking about things that people had applied to have a tree removed.
Yeah, so I think that usually the applicant is the DPW. And underneath there, it says, like, if something doesn't serve a public purpose. So what usually happens is someone calls the DPW, and they go and look, and they file the application. So are you, are you suggesting that the DPW is going to pay out of their budget to have trees replaced?
That was not the intent, but I can go back and look at that again.
And under B, in that section, if a tree of equivalent size cannot reasonably be obtained?
Right. Again, looking for some flexibility there.
So, well, that's another loophole word.
Well, but there are places where loopholes are, are appropriate in terms of flexibility, I think.
Well, I don't think as far as clarity. So if either, either you can obtain the tree at that DPH or you can't, what does reasonably mean?
I mean, if it's a million-dollar tree, for example, then you look for other ways to do it.
I don't, I don't like loophole words. Oh, and then, under the utility company, 7E, you have tree warden, select board shall hold a public hearing, and for trees on scenic roads, shall be a consolidated public meeting with the planning board to review the annual plan. So are you suggesting multiple meetings for one plan? Because usually they send the plan, it's circuits, some are, go on scenic, some don't, and we've, before the, all the other plans, we've just...
Do it all together.
Done it all together.
Which is fine. To me, again, this was worth distinguishing between times when the planning board should be involved and isn't required to be involved. But again, from a practical standpoint, you know, doing it all together certainly makes sense.
But I thought that we had agreed with the select board, that the planning board and the select board would approve the, the annual maintenance plans.
Utility plans?
Yeah.
If that's the case, I forgot that, so it's something I could change.
And then, under prohibited activities, the significant or substantial injury, I would remove because it's inconsistent with Mass general law. Ms. Hulvan?
So I don't know about anybody else, but I think what I just witnessed is just, again, Sam, you know Mimi's passion with this.
Yep.
It's, she's been involved with so long, and it's just this simple act of maybe reaching out prior to getting it redlined to be able to have a mutual collaboration so that together you could propose the changes to the public. Now, it's going to be a process to get through, because I am supportive of Mimi and all of the points she's just made. And I will definitely voice my opinion about that, but it's, it's, unfortunately, this is iterative of everything that's been happening with select board, and the inability of the select board to reach out and partner with your other committees and boards. So I'm just disappointed, Sam, that's all. I just witnessed what you, what I just witnessed, she kind of schooled you on a couple things.
Sure.
And you recognize that. You could have done that in a private session and come to public with something that was useful and that was collaborated on.
Well, I guess I could have, on the, I'm here tonight, and I think that, in some ways, it's better to do in public, you know, with the planning board, as opposed to privately between two individuals.
Would have been great if you reached out to let us know that we were alerted through an e-alert, that it was on your agenda. So again, thanks for the collaboration. I'm done with my statement, thank you.
I did, again, state my intent to do this at the last select board meeting, so it's out there.
I found out on my Southborough because it wasn't on the agenda.
Yep. Okay, well, again, apologies if there was, you know, missed information there, hard feelings or whatever, but again, I think that I'm...
No hard feelings, just trying to do what's best for the residents of this town.
As I am, actually. So again, I'm happy to entertain these comments and talk about it more tomorrow night's meeting. We'll see where it goes.
Mr. Murray?
So I don't understand why this needed to get done now. So I understand there's a long history of working to try to get some sort of procedure in place that works and also aligns with the fact that we're Tree City USA community, and we are, you know, trying to all move in the same direction, and it's been very, very difficult over the years. But this policy is not even six months old, and, you know, as much as I want to tweak it, too, and I have, and I actually sent a copy of a policy, some changes that, you know, I had done in the past, this is, I don't think it's the right time. I mean, I just briefly looked up, for example, what's a policy versus a procedure? So I don't believe that a policy has to specifically cite the law. A policy is a guiding principle, you, I just randomly looked up something on Google, so maybe there's other better definitions. But policy is a guiding principle used to set direction in an organization. Procedure is a set of steps to be followed as a consistent repetitive approach to accomplish an end result. It seems to me that that's what we're trying to do. We have, this policy, in my opinion, is a little bit of both. And it's trying to accomplish the fact that we've had a disastrous few years of the DPW cutting down trees without including the planning board, and just, you know, neighbors going to work and their trees are being, you know, cut down from the property in front of their house. So I just feel like this is the wrong time. I'm actually a fan of looking at policies from time to time to update them, but seeing this one's not even six months old, I can live with the fact of anything that's in there. I would have preferred, if we're going to change a policy, not to start undoing the agreements that, you know, have kind of already been made, but to put some sort of a preamble on it for what we stand for. But that doesn't, you know, we, we are Tree City USA, we are trying to preserve trees, we are trying to replace one-for-one that get taken down. I don't know, whatever we want to say about the, the way we feel about our community. But this isn't really even a public-facing document, and so I, I don't see the need to do it. I don't think any of these changes that you're talking about change the end result. It doesn't change our procedure. And I think one of you just mentioned, you know, that, you know, yes, the, the planning board might have an opposing procedure, I think, Mimi is what you said. And that's the exact thing that I thought. If the select board want to change the tree policy, then planning board should create a scenic road policy, and I've already done it. And that's one of the reasons... And I've already done it. And that's one of the reasons that I've done it. And I did it. And this, this board, this board wasn't, they said, why? We have it, you know, it shouldn't interact with the tree policy. What good is this thing going to do? It's the exact reason. It's to protect our trees. So I don't see anything that's getting done tonight, or any of the changes that you're proposing, as being necessary. I think that efforts can be spent elsewhere. And I don't think it's going to have really much of an impact, except for it will undo some of the agreements that have already been made. And also, it chips away at the relationship because, you know, we should give it some time, you know? We shouldn't make policies and then change them three months later or four months later. That just means that, you know, we didn't pressure test it. I'm for, let's pressure. I'm not a fan of this procedure. I think we should get a qualified arborist for a tree warden. I don't think the Select Board should be the tree warden. I think that we should do a whole lot of other things. But it's not up to me alone. Collectively as a group, we've agreed at this procedure, and I think we should stick with it and try it out a little bit longer.
And I will thank you, Sam, for being here tonight. I think it helps a lot for going in tomorrow's meeting. At least we've had this conversation.
Helpful to understand better. And to Mrs. Maria, I mean, this is a very public facing policy. I mean, the Select Board and other boards have policies that are important for the public to see. And I do think that if you find a policy that has a problem, and which I see is inconsistency as a problem, I think it's important to fix it as opposed to, you know, waiting six months or a year or whatever and let that problem continue. So that's, again, in my perspective, but I understand you have a different view, so.
Does anyone in the audience have anything?
Yes, ma'am. Freddie Gillespie, 78 South Hill Road, speaking as a citizen. I find the timing of this concerning. And I find taking the native out of it is concerning. I don't, I agree with Mimi. I don't believe that it's inconsistent. However, right before this came out, there was a meeting of the planning board, I think your last meeting, where you were reviewing the lack, I'm sorry, the, for the St. Mark's Park, replacement of the trees that were taken down on the St. Mark's Road and the stone wall. And the comment was that the replacement trees, which are in the St. Mark's Park, and three of them are cultivars, which don't meet the requirement. Well, now, they'll meet the requirement of the shade tree because we just changed the policy after you made that statement. My, are you following me? You made a statement that the shade trees didn't, three of them, I think it was three, didn't comply because they're cultivars. And now it's like, I was on the committee, and I reviewed the plans all the way through. I didn't, I wasn't on the committee at the end, but I reviewed, there were no cultivars. And all of a sudden, at the very end, cultivars, three cultivars showed up, how they got in there, why someone put them in. It was not discussed at any meeting. I, I was privy to or watched. So now you commented that they shouldn't be cultivars, and now, magic. You don't have to have cultivars anymore. That's concerning. When you're in the middle of a discussion like that, a requirement that was in place when the shade trees were discussed with this board for being replacement, and now all of a sudden, the rules have changed. That, that's, that's not good policy. That's not good politics. And it's not good leadership for this community.
Yeah, and those cultivars that Ms. Gillespie is referring to have variegated leaves. And those have been proven scientifically to not be ecologically beneficial. Insects stay away from them. They're good for humans to look at because they change the color, and they're brighter, and they stay colored longer. But they're not helpful for wildlife at all.
I have heard that. And again, I think if this policy is changed as I have proposed here, I think that does not actually rule out, you know, having the trees that folks appear to want in the, in the park. Doesn't rule it out, but it doesn't require it. So to me, again, that's flexibility that's useful. But again, I understand there are differences of opinion here. And I look forward to the discussion at tomorrow night's meeting.
I just have to say, it doesn't rule it out, but it takes away the planning board's argument that they don't comply. Because now they do. So how did they get in there? Somebody put them there, somebody wants them there. And now the planning board says they don't comply, so they shouldn't be there. And now that, that argument goes away because they are in compliance under this new policy change. That's the problem.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else. We'll have this discussion again tomorrow. Does anyone else have anything?
Go for it, Mr. Litt.
Can we have a lesson?
Litt, Woodland Road. I've been sort of listening to this go back and forth. And, you know, I, I'm actually inclined to support Mr. Stivers in his-
Can we shut off that microphone?
In, in his attempt to make a technical clarification to the, to the policy. Because, I mean, he's right that the bylaws talk about goals and intents, and the policy sets requirements. And that is, in fact, inconsistent. What I'm not hearing between, you know, the two sides of this discussion is disagreement about the goals. The goals are to have native trees and other plants used in, in town. And I, you know, I understand the concern that maybe, you know, this is sort of an entering wedge into somehow undoing policy. I think that's taking a rather pessimistic view. What I hear is, is, you know, the goals are the same. And, you know, technically, when you go and you look at the language, you know, one says goal, and the other says require, and maybe they should be the same. I don't read more into it than that. Maybe I'm naive.
Are we, anything else on this? Anybody in the audience have anything to?
We have six attendees, no hands raised.
I think we're, this is it? Oh, yes. So we will have a forum on this Thursday, September 21st, at 6:30 at the Public Safety Building. And this is on, a public information session on the MBTA Communities, a legis- statute that was passed by the state requiring towns with a transit station within them to provide for a zoning district for multifamily housing at a density of 15 units an acre. And South Borough is required to have a 50-acre zone or zones, a half, 10 acres of which have to be within a half mile of the commuter rail station. And the next public information session on the same subject is Wednesday, September 27th, at the Public Safety Building at 5:30. And our next regular meeting is October 2nd.
And I make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demaria, yes.